What are you trying to do?
Yeah.
The computer?
Okay, just I got my phone.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for, or Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Is, is everyone's microphone on?
Is everybody's microphone on?
Yes. Okay.
Recording in progress.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for joining us to the regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council called to order today at six oh two P M. Madam Clerk, can you please take roll call?
Hassan Ahmad.
Here.
Mo Baydun.
Here.
Nancy Breyer.
Here.
Robert Constant.
Present.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Hassan Sab.
Present.
And Ham Wenzel.
Here.
Mister Chad, you have a corner.
Thank you so much. Next up, we're gonna have the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll have our Treasurer, Lisa X. Clan, being a some of the Pledge of Allegiance.
We declare the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You all may be seated. Next up, we have the agenda approval.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the agenda for the regular meeting of March twenty five, twenty twenty five as submitted.
Support. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have an approval of the minutes. Minutes of the regular meeting.
Oops, hold on, ma'am. This is not.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the minutes for the regular meetings of March eleven, twenty twenty five, as outlined in four, actually.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion on that? Madam Clerk, can you let me in the meeting, into the meeting? Thank you. Any discussion on the approval of the minute? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. I love the engagement. Next up, we have public hearings and public comments. You have two minutes in the beginning. Uh, please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on. Are you speaking as the treasurer? Are you speaking as the, uh?
I'm speaking this evening, I don't wanna touch this thing, as your city treasurer.
Awesome.
Um, good evening, everyone. Lisa X., Clayton Treasurer. What I wanted to speak on would be the budget items that are on the agenda. I wanna draw your attention, Council Honorable Body, to what I left for you, which is the cash flow report to take us through the fiscal year. I hope everybody has a copy of that. If not, I have copies for you if you'd like. I did bring extra copies with me, and I will give that. Is okay if I have, give this?
Yep, please hand them over to the clerk's office, and I'll hand that over. Thank you.
Yeah, make sure I gave you enough. Seven. They, they were in your mailbox as well, and then we'll give you some copies here. So what I wanna draw to your attention is through the month of June, which is when our fiscal year ends, June thirtieth. What we anticipate right now, based on the financial records we have, we would be end with a balance, at least as a positive balance, of one point six million dollars, one million, five hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred fifty-one dollars, and twenty-eight cents to be exact. Now, keep in mind that that does not include any inter funds for the balance of the year, though we just did a sweeping volume of them recently in March. But what my concern is, is if you do budget amendments and additional appropriations, then your fund balance policy, which is eight percent, if you do eight percent of your sixty million dollar budget, you need to have a balance of four point eight million, okay, by the end of the fiscal year. So based on current projections, I think this is really close, and I am not going to give an opinion which way to go or try to persuade you, but I wanted to share the facts with you, so you know what we're talking about, what the cash flow is, what is available, and don't forget, you're the body who approved the resolution, adopted the resolution for the fund balance policy of eight percent, that it was registered with the state of Michigan, Michigan Department Treasury. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Mister Abdul Haq has his hand up. If we can unmute him.
Hello?
There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yep, please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on. You have two minutes.
Zuhair Abdul Haq, five, three, five, four, Rosemary. I just want to ask, uh, the city council to put on the ballot in November, an amendment to over, uh, to rescind our headly override. I think the residents deserve reduce in their taxes, and our city becoming very, very high in taxes, especially water and other things. So if you can instruct one of the lawyers to start putting this, uh, to get it on the ballot either in August or in November, so the people can vote on it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I thank you very much for everything you do.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Anyone else in the audience? Council Chair, sure, yes, Councilman.
I just might, might make a statement of a comment. Um, this is, um, National Women's History Month, and we've been honoring several women, city council has through, uh, social media, and, uh, well deserved to all the people that have been recognized. Uh, but there's a group of women in the community that are kinda overlooked in this special month, and that's the mothers out there. And the mothers are the backbone of our society and our families, and I think, even though they don't have corporate jobs or business owners, which there's nothing wrong with that, those are great, uh, features to have, but I think we should honor all the mothers. They get one day a year, Mother's Day, and we're having a whole month for National, uh, Women's History Month. So I just wanna make sure that the mothers aren't left out on this, because I know my wife was raised in a second family, and I think that's one of the most important things ever in the, in the world. So congratulations to all the mothers out there. We honor you for National, uh, Women's History Month.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move over from far to fun.
Chair. Could we, a moment of silence? We just lost one of the best librarians last evening, Mister Robert Butler.
Mister Robert Butler, a moment of silence, Mister Robert Butler.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I didn't know that.
Yeah, it just happened.
Uh, next up is fund transfers and current claims.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved current claims and ACH wire transfer six dash one through six dash twenty-one, six dash twenty-three through six dash twenty-five, and six dash twenty-seven through six dash fifty, as submitted.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. That feels good. Next up, we have seven A, Parks and Recreation Director, Zabin, Zabinski, Z Z B O Z.
Bosnick.
The Bosnick.
The Bosnick.
Is that why he has in quotation, the Bosnick? There it is.
Get over to Richard A. Young Community. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the contract for the Richard A. Young Community Center Whirlpool Renovation, Phase One, between the city and Miracle Method Commercial Surface Refinishing Company, for the fixed amount of twenty-two hundred fifty dollars to refinish the surface of the whirlpool to be funded out of the twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five Parks and Recreation Budget Account, number six nine two dash nine three two, as outlined in seven dash A.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion?
Long overdue. I, I, I have a question. This is for the whirlpool, correct?
Yes, it is.
Um, so I've, I've checked it out a couple of times. I know the sauna also needs some updating. I feel like the machine is always going out when I talk to some of the residents. Just keep an eye on that one, but as far as the whirlpool goes, um, I feel like this is like our second or third time where like, we're, we're doing something with it. Is there something wrong internally with it, or is it, are we just resurfacing it to make it more appealing to the?
There's a lot. There was a lot wrong with it. Um, for me, the last six weeks, the first couple of weeks, I went through every facility, every park, assessed everything, and the first goal is to fix what we have. You know, there's nothing worse than seeing, you know, burned out light bulbs, broken things. I could go, I have a list of twenty-two items that just didn't work. I mean, we didn't even have a floor scrubber. We've been, we've been mopping the entire center with a mop. That means the gym, everything. You can imagine what that was, just because we didn't get, we didn't get things fixed. So I've been going through each thing. If we have an amenity, and, and it's an important amenity, we have a, a center that has a whirlpool, it, it, it needs to work. And once we, we had a problem with the pump, uh, because the pump wasn't pumping, the, the state shut us down because it wasn't meeting the state's, uh, requirements. So, um, so we, um, uh, so we shut it down, and we had a lot of people come and assess it. We got all kinds of bills, up to ten thousand dollars to repair it. So I just had to break it down to the lowest denominator. Once we drained the water out of it, we seen the whole finish was just, was all falling apart. It basically, the way I look at it, if I won't step in it, I don't expect anyone else. So the first thing I did is we called several, um, reglazing companies. Most of them wouldn't touch it, because it was a commercial, uh, uh, facility. We finally found one, a really good reputation, the Miracle Method. They specialize in this, so they gave us the lowest price. So that, that took the first thing, that we wanted the, the tub that looked nice when we're all finished, because once we get the pump fixed, we're gonna fill it up. So the next problem was, we got, we narrowed it down to the, the, uh, the pump that circulated everything, that was causing all of our levels to not meet all the standards, and that's the second part of this, uh, thing, is to get the pump replaced. And we've been kind of like putting rebuilt parts on it. We basically just bought a new pump, and hopefully, it's a lot larger pump, so we went from like a one horsepower pump to one and a half. It should be more than enough, and I hope we won't have any more problems with it.
Thank you so much, sir. Council Chair.
Yes, sir, Councilman.
Yeah, just briefly, so years ago, the sauna stopped working. People would put water on the rocks. Also, what I had to do was take and put a new unit in. It took like two years, and then the same thing with the, um, uh, whirlpool. It's, it just has to be maintained, and it shouldn't be that expensive or that difficult. That's great, because a lot of people are waiting to see both the sauna working, which it's working now, and the whirlpool. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Parks and Recreation Director, Za Banznick.
Za Buz.
Council Chair.
Get over to Richard A. Young.
Okay.
Councilwoman Breyer.
All right. I'd like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized the repair slash replacement of the whirlpool pump by Pool Scouts for the Richard A. Young Community Center Whirlpool Renovation. Phase two for a cost of two thousand four hundred sixty-five dollars to be funded out of the twenty twenty-four dash two, twenty twenty-five Parks and Rec Budget Account Number six nine two dash nine three two, as outlined in seven B.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman.
Um, this is not about the pump, but that, that area there, the, the walls and the paint in there.
As soon, as soon as we get the pump, the whirlpool going, we're going to go and we're going to regrout the floors. It'll make a world of difference on it. Then the whole room is gonna become more inviting and attractive. So this is like going through step one. We're just on one step at a time. One thing, one thing at a time. Once we get it done, we have a whole plan to just keep moving through. That's what we're doing everywhere. You know, the saunas were all replaced. Uh, one of them blew up about a week ago. We were able to get that fixed right away. Um, so everything is all functioning properly, and, uh, that's how we're gonna keep it.
Is there enough money in the budget to, to take care of these? These aren't gonna put you over on your budget, are you?
Not at all. No, that's, that's, I, I worked it. I mean, we really, we deal with pennies here, so, you know, we, we call every contractor. We really break it down to get the very best price, and, and that's what we did, so we can get the most for it. So we can just, we have more money to spend on something else.
Right, thank you.
All right.
Council Chair.
Councilman. I have a question. It's not about, um, the pump. It's about the Van Houn Park behind us. Uh, Van Houn, I'm sorry. I emailed the director on the seventeen, uh, engineer on the seventeen regarding the condition of the new equipment and the tunnel we had, and I never received a response.
He did. I think he said it's on a punch card to be replaced.
No. This, this was on three seventeen. I never.
Yeah, yeah, I think it was.
Well, I said the last thing. Right, but the thing is, is that they were coming in for payment. Was that payment ever issued? Do you know?
Uh, we're still withholding, uh, a good deal of money, uh, until they finish our punch list, and the, uh, city engineer is working on a solution for the tunnel that, on that particular part. We still have a lot of problems with a lot of it. The, the, uh, the astroturf they used isn't done properly. The edging isn't proper. Uh, a lot of cleanup to the site. A lot of things have to be pulled out. Um, we just, we just sent them a whole list, uh, uh, this week.
Can we ask that you get, uh, Building Official Volter and cite everything wrong with it, because there's a lot of safety issues with this build out for kids?
Uh, there is, and it's, it's really, the kids are already trying to use it. It's not even really finished. It's not even completed.
My wife took my son. She's like, oh my God, we got a new park in Dearborn Heights. I said, the Van Houn Park has always been there, they love it. It's a new place to, a place to.
Right, and, and we're, we're working on, uh, the whole shelter, a new, little shelter concept to refreshen it, make it look a hundred times better, replacing broken concrete. We're trying to patch up the, the, um, splash pad, but I can tell you this summer it's gonna be an issue, because it's just, it's obviously leaking water underneath the ground, and it's a, a very expensive fix. So we're looking at every single thing there. We, we've been working with, with everything. We're gonna try to freshen it up and make it look better, but the chances of having it working properly probably will not happen this summer, and I know that's gonna be a big issue for everybody.
I, I have a question, Councilman Saab, if that's okay. When we say it's very expensive, what is the solution, though? Like, we can't afford it.
For the, the splash pad?
Yeah.
The splash pad is gonna probably cost, if we just wanna fix the pipes and tear up all the concrete, fix the pipes, we're probably looking at eighty to a hundred thousand dollars. When we start talking that kind of money, it's twenty years old, it's time to like look at a whole new system. We have a brand new pump there. We just have to replace the, the sprays, the concrete, and obviously the plumbing in it, and that's on my list to go after a grant to, to handle.
That's what I was gonna say, like, can we, can we ask the state? Can we ask the county, like, hey, can we try to ask a little bit from everybody and just put it all together to, to be able to get back to them? I mean, I would hate to not be able to use that splash pad once again. For three years, we've been told that this, and I'm not, it's not you. But for three years, we said that we're gonna get it back up and running. We're gonna get it back up and running. We got plumbers out there. We got people out there, you know, DPW's looking at it. The Contras are just looking at it, like.
Yeah.
Let's give them something.
Yeah, a serious problem with all the water. Uh, the pipes are cracked. They're broken from probably freezing, settling of the ground. It's ready to cave in, basically. If we turn on that water, it's probably just gonna wash it away and make it worse. Um, so that's the situation. I think the water bill on it last year was thirty thousand dollars, because most of the water was going into the ground. So, you know, it's just not feasible to run something like that. I know when the temperatures go up, so will, uh, the temperatures on our, our residents, so yes, it's, it's definitely, we just finished all that assessment, and, uh, it, it needs to go for a grant and get replaced.
Council Chair, Councilman. I, I think the biggest problem with this splash pad is when it was built, it's, uh, like every other splash pad around, it recycles the water, and this splash pad, the water goes through the spray nozzles, down the drain, into the sewer.
You're, you're correct, and, and we've already looked at alternative ways that not only recycle it, but it can go into a collection that we can use the water of the grass or the soccer field. So we're looking at, there's a lot of new ways to do things now, and we can do that, but I can tell you, coming from Dearborn, that has new splash pads, swimming pools, in this climate, every single spring when we open them up, they are nothing but trouble. We spend a fortune replacing pipes and, that are frozen, no matter how they're pumped out, it's just, in this environment, pools and splash pads are expensive. And I, we just, we had a new splash pad. It lasted two years. We had to, we had to tear it up, because pipes were broken in it. So they're, they're just, they're troublesome. Um, you know, and, and we're, they try to do our best not to have that as we move forward.
How much do you think is a new system could cost?
I can't say for sure. I, I, I've been researching. I was actually doing that yesterday, looking to see what alternatives are, because that one being twenty years old, I wanted to see if there was something even nicer and even more fun that the kids would enjoy, so I was kinda hoping that they would really, you know, they, they'd come a long way on them. Unfortunately, they haven't changed a lot, so I was a little disappointed, because I always wanna give them something better than, than what we're replacing.
I know there is a beautiful one in Westland.
Yes.
Park.
And, uh, a lot of them I've seen, it's, they have a lot more space than we have. So we have a very limited footprint there for one, so we're kinda limited in what we can do with it, but I, that's, I'm gonna try to find what we can, and, and now that we, you know, it, it really should have enough fence around it too, because the kids could wander out into the parking lot. So there's a lot of modifications we're gonna do with it. And then I'm looking at the possibility that we can make it with a fountain, so at night when we shut it off, it'd be a, a colored fountain. So when you're sitting there and enjoying the park at night, you're actually gonna have a fountain as well as a splash pad.
Thank you, Director.
So.
Chair.
Yep, one more guy, go ahead.
Yeah, and it's in a nice, it's in an area of the city that doesn't have a lot of other parks, and so even without the splash pad, it's got the walking track and the, the playground and everything else, so it's in a good location even without the splash pad working.
Correct, yeah. Just, just looks bad that we don't have it working, and, but we're gonna work on that. It's just not an easy or quick fix, unfortunately.
Maybe we'll get Park Village money from the county for it.
Yes, that's, that's the plan.
You guys ready? Any other discussion, discussion? Seeing none. Uh, motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Constant. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is reports from Mayor. Running a annual Martin Marathon Saturday, April twelfth. Council Chair. Twenty twenty-five, thank you. Councilman.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council grant permission for running fit events to hold their Martian Marathon on Saturday, April twelfth, twenty twenty-five, at six fifteen A M, as outlined in eight A.
Second. Uh, motion made by Councilman Constance, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is nine A, Clerksinia Annual Liquor License Review.
Council Chair.
Councilwoman.
I'd like to make motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council receive, note, and file the twenty twenty-five liquor license review and direct Corporation Council to contact and/or draft a letter to businesses with deficiencies. If the department that cited the deficiency has not already done so, requesting the deficiencies be addressed within thirty days of said letter to provide an update to the city councils outlined in nine A.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Council Chair, could, could the clerk give us a brief synopsis of what this is all about?
It's, it's to follow the ordinance that was created for an annual liquor license review. So, um, questionnaires goes out to the departments, building, fire, police. They fill out the form to see if their water controller for the water, treasurer for, um, to link with personal property taxes, and then it's the clerk's job to compile those reports, present them to city council for your review. Um, it attached was the list that was given. There were some of deficiency. The last one, I'm happy to report for Warren Bot Valley, that has been resolved. So that is, they're in compliant right now, so they're in the process of obtaining their liquor license. They have not already done so. And then they have to go, because it isn't a new address, they have to go really through the similar, um, questionnaire. So we're in the process of doing that. Hopefully, on the next agenda, that will be on the next agenda and approved. Um, and then the other ones are four by the police that was cited and two by water. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. City Engineer, Dib, USGS Joint Funding Agreement, twenty twenty.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the renewal of the joint funding agreement between the US Geological Survey, USGS, and the city for the operation of a stream gauging station on the Ekor's Creek for a cost of sixteen thousand, and authorized the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city. In addition, authorized the mayor and comptroller to, or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from GL account five nine two, five three six, eight one seven, zero zero zero, as outlined in nine H B.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any agree, any agreements, any discussions?
Yes. Yep, this account, the GL account, is this an actual account or is this out of fund balance?
Let's ask our, uh, general. It's our general ledger, though, yeah. Is that question for the treasurer, or, or the comptroller, one of the two?
Council Chair. Hang on, one second. Let the councilman do his part first.
Hi, Sharon. Hi, so there, there is, this is not coming from fund balance. There is a not, in this budget for this purchase.
He's, I think he's asking the account number that is being asked and used.
Yep, that, that account number has a balance. It has enough of a balance to pay for that. I'm sorry?
What's the balance?
Uh, there is a hundred and forty thousand left in this account.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilman Wenzel.
Is this an annual fee or is it two-year contract or sixteen thousand dollars for?
Annual. It's in our back. I was, I was just looking at that and see that.
Thank you. Anything else? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you. DPW Director Nancy Water Billing Department Door.
Council Chair.
Councilwoman Breyer.
I'd like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the purchase and payment of a new door for water billing department from Door and Hardware Company for a total cost two thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars. In addition, authorized mayor and comptroller or clerk to sign the necessary warrants and the treasurer to issue payment from GL account contractual services one zero one, two six five, eight one eight, zero zero zero, is outlined in nine C.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Constance, was that?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. All right.
Council Chair.
Question?
Yes.
Councilman Saab.
Few questions about this. Director Nancy. Is your, uh?
A cup of tea?
A cup of tea.
Love the festivity today with the yellow. You definitely are from Ann Arbor, wearing that yellow, Michigan.
It's better school.
Ah, not a basketball. Geez.
They're still.
Get to be determined.
So, uh, Director, a few questions here, and I, I don't mean to grill you on this.
Oh, you're all right.
What's the purpose of this?
Uh, I was just instructed by our administration. I think we had a couple of concerns from employees, just security-based, um, to get three quotes on a door. Um, the water billing department, as you know, if you walk through the city hall, is the only, it's the only two employees that technically have no security in the event we have any type of emergency. So I was just tasked with get three prices. These employees do want some type of security at their particular office. It's kinda where we're at, so I just provided three prices, and then administrate them, put them on the, uh, agenda. It's kind of where we were at. So I just provided three prices and then administrate them, put them on the uh agenda.
Okay, is there a is there a door to those back offices or no?
Uh the two employees that sit up front, there's no protection. It's just the swinging gate and then the. Back office for the utility billing and then the mailing room where they print mail all the uh. Any type of, I'm sure the treasurer uses as well. I think the whole city hall uses that particular room.
So what prompted what prompted this all of a sudden?
Uh to my knowledge, just employees putting in a request to the administration. I wasn't here, I mean.
Council Chair, hang on one second, please.
Uh Chief, maybe up here, please. So I know this stemmed from an incident at the last meeting we had.
Correct.
And there was apparently uh there was concerns of threatening being made towards an employee in the middle of the night.
Yes.
Or to family members.
Correct.
And I got notification that a police report was filed.
No police report.
Okay, or a complaint was filed.
Correct.
Right? Was that ever investigated?
It was uh investigated and we felt that uh it was closed at an administrative level.
I'm sorry?
It was closed at an administrative level.
Okay, closed, but if a threat was being made or anything towards an employee. And it was either written writing. Or put sound that there's a security, it was closed at administration level. Why are we requesting doors for that development all of a sudden?
Um the person who made the alleged allegation felt that they didn't, there's no need to make a police report and go further with it. And then we closed it based on her being the person that wanted to report.
You or she, let's not give away any personnel information.
Well, I mean, it didn't matter at this point because she was named out in the last city council.
I mean, let's let's refrain from watching it at this meeting, please.
Uh my question to you is that if an allegation is made.
Yes.
And it's bought up.
Correct.
In the city, and somebody retracts it, is that easy to just close it out?
Yeah.
So I can come to you and give you a false allegation or a claim or a threat that happened to me, then decide later on, just close it?
Yeah, where are we going with this right now?
It has nothing to do with the door.
Absolutely does. It absolutely does. My thing is that I was named in something. Right? I'm I didn't do it. I'm telling you, I didn't do it.
Yeah.
If somebody did it, somebody should be charged and investigated. But also if a false claim was ever made, that should be investigated also.
Um the claim was that not made against you, it was made that she was being threatened by others.
He or she, please.
He or she was being threatened by others because of a statement that you made during a city council meeting. She, this person, he or she is the victim. That person came forward at first. When we were asked, how far did she this he or she wanted to go with this, they they felt that it was uh.
Our controller is also raising her hand. Maybe she maybe she has some insight on this. If that's okay, chief.
Yeah, and then just and then we can go to control in a second. We felt that it was. There was a couple of things we went back and forth about, maybe moving the water department to a different area in the city hall. We just felt that that wasn't appropriate at the time. And then there was a request made by all the people. That worked in the water department to at least have a door that was secured.
I I I gotta say, um they they should have a door.
Yes.
Let me tell you something, the water department, regardless of whatever the internal issue is. I've I've been there where I've seen certain residents just explode. And if something breaks out, the door is a swinging door, the door.
And and that we felt that the door was.
But I think where the councilman is coming from this is like, why is it now that the councilman started speaking up against? You know, water department or or whatever he started speaking out against. He it, I think the councilman just wants to make you sure that this isn't because what he said, because he voiced his concern. And and so he just wants reassurance that it's not because he spoke up. He wants, you know, and and so I'm I think I could just kind of elaborate on it like, and I'm sure he'll understand that as well, Councilman Saab, if that's okay, is. Give them a door because at the end of the day, we're seeing outrageous water bills. And people are afraid that if, you know, maybe somebody comes in there and says, you know, I'm tired of hearing the same thing you've been saying. Let me come in there, let me try to give you a piece of my mind. God knows, who knows? I mean, has there been any reports of any dangerous things at city hall unless here?
No, no.
It's either how, either way, for for the employees' security purposes, have a door for any type of future approaches.
Council Chair.
Well, let me let me make sure Councilman Saab is over. Are you all set?
Councilwoman.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
Hey, what about the ordinance department? It's already got a secure door. It's empty. Ordinance is down at the Justice Center.
Too small.
Yeah, for for the water department to go to the Justice Center?
No, 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 no.
That was one of the options. I had Mariana speak on.
In that department.
Before you do that, hang on Mariana.
That that was one of the options. That was option, I would say, one, but we felt that that wasn't the best move at the time. Option two was secure them with a door and they felt comfortable with staying. At their current location as long as they had a door, a door that was secure. And that's what.
So why wasn't it?
The first one?
Yeah.
I believe it was just going to be too costly and it was too small for them.
Hang on one second before you guys, please. Are you all still here, Councilwoman?
I was still sat.
Okay, so then go ahead.
No, because I'm thinking if you just move the actual people across the hall and keep the rest of the billing over on the other side, that may work. I mean, it's it's large enough for two people to sit in there and do what they do in that front portion of the water department.
Yeah, that that was one of the options, but like I told you, it was one of the options. It was one of two options. And and it was the the mayor's office and his staff that decided to go with the door. Alright.
Hang on one second because it's, I was supposed to go to Shannon and then Councilman Wenzel, so. Can you go to Shannon Shepherd first, please?
Yeah, I just wanted to like offer some clarification. So it was it was one of um my employees that had come to me and just said that. Um they they didn't feel safe. They said the residents were getting more and more aggressive. Um after the council meeting last night, there weren't any council members named or anything like that. Um and they just said that because there's no door and no like um like. Security person in their work area, they just felt um that they didn't have a safe and comfortable working environment. And so I had sent out an email to um the mayor, chief of staff. Um I think H R Director, uh DPW Director and uh the police chief, just to kind of um ask for suggestions on how to resolve it.
Okay.
Council Chair.
Well, I'm gonna give you your, hang on, I'm gonna go to Councilman Wenzel. Then I'm gonna go to Mariana and then I'll come to Councilman Saab. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um a couple of weeks ago, I was at city hall and I was talking to some people and. Had the water bill issue and I wa- walked right in there and the girls, I said, please, Councilman, you know, don't don't come in unless you're invited. And I was like, oh yeah, that's cool, you know, and I walked, I said, and you can just walk right in there. It's a Plexiglas. Swinging thing. It's not even the door. It's just a covers, you know, it swings, it's made out of Plexiglas. You bend it and you it's, I don't even know if it has a lock on it at all. I don't think it does. And I thought to myself, I go, that's pretty, that's pretty unsafe, you know. And then plus, I don't know, in the back area. Once you get in there, there's a hallway over to the treasurer's office. I don't know if there's, you know, like that. But I don't know if there's any people in danger there. But um I mean, I'm a hundred percent in favor of this and. I I I talked to Director Dancy about this and and um he it all this pressure is put on him. And because it's sort of his department, building maintenance. And it 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 wasn't his idea, which which he should claim because it is a good idea, but but it was brought up by the administration. Through him to put it on the agenda. So I and I think it's a good idea and we we should definitely pass it.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh Mariana, do you have something you want to wrap up with?
Yes, I just wanted to add that the old ordinance building, it is currently being used by the Building and Engineering Department. There are three employees who sit there pretty much on a daily basis. So dislocating them to an unsafe location, we would have the same issue all over again with the three additional employees. Um so. Well, but again, regardless, it wouldn't have been an easy solution, as well as the fact that the supervisor of the water billing department is currently right across from. The water billing area. So it's an easy space. If they have any issues, they can go and call their supervisor. It's ideal to keep them in the location where they're at. Um but again, we just believe that as you have all kind of concluded. There's a need for a door and that's why the request is in front of you today.
Council Chair.
Council Chair.
I'm gonna have Councilman Saab and then Councilman Ahmad, then we're wrapping this one up.
Just uh just a follow up to that. You want to put a door, but the counter has Plexiglas. Right?
Correct.
So how is that making anything safe?
Again, we're taking steps towards it. At least it would prevent the entry of individuals into the space.
How about what we asked for a week ago? How about a review of the water department? And the process of procedures of the water department?
Okay.
Let's this is, we're talking about the doors right now, guys. Let's let's see on the same thing.
Thank you, Council Chair. I I I have no issue with the door. I mean, every department needs to have a door. But uh what kind of door is this for twenty two hundred? Is that like a safe door? There's nothing to attach it to. So this building supervisor mentioned that uh it's nothing really our billing department could do or feel. That they want the liability in case there are any issues in the future. So we called three commercial door companies. Because we also can't just put in a residential hollow.
That's a very cheap door, I think.
Like I said, it, yeah, I mean.
In our backup, there's only one.
Oh, we called three companies, tried to get them in as quick as possible and only one responded and came.
Okay, so we don't have three beds then?
No, there was somebody out there, uh I think yesterday he finally came from a different company. I let the building supervisor handle it.
I would say we just table it till we have three beds, Council Chair, and then we can take it from there.
Okay. I don't think anybody here is opposing not having the door. I think I think this is just.
Yeah, every every department needs the door, hundred percent.
No worries. But that was why there's only those. We called three companies, same day that we got that I received the request. And one came out immediately. The other two didn't show up. And then when I happened to be in city hall, I think it was yesterday, the building supervisor was there with somebody.
Is the counter glass, is it the same thing like the building department glass, the counter glass?
No, no, it is just Plexiglas. So again, I mean, it's not, it's one step in the right direction. It's not a hundred percent.
One is safer, the one at the building department?
Yeah, the building department actually has some you can pull all the way down if needed.
Okay.
Well, that's that's the uh that's the gate.
I don't know, yeah. You said I'm not in this building every day, but.
Council Chair.
Yep.
I think the water department and the building department, that was put up during COVID. It's just Plexiglas. The treasurer's office and the clerk's office is the only one that has um.
Glass.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. As I said, I think the the main point is just to prevent any unwanted entry of a individual that may come into the city hall. Like I said, it's the only building.
Director, since you're gonna do uh maybe work on a couple more bids, please for the door, can you maybe get a bid for the actual roof glass for the counter too?
Yeah. Any company will give you a bid for whatever we ask for, so.
Just to see how much it's gonna cost.
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, that Councilman Saab said, I mean, if you're gonna put a door, they can jump off the, you know, from the counters. Doesn't make any sense. Thank you, Director.
No worries.
Just a follow up to that. Just those counters are not ADA compliant also. To spend all this money. For all the stuff on the doors, we really don't have wheelchair access to any of these counters either. So you'd be still be in violation.
And I'm sorry, say. Any project can grow legs as far as you want.
But you're gonna spend money and taxpayer money, you're gonna either do it right or not because somebody and the administration wants it. You either do it right or don't do it at all because you're gonna place a door, there's no, there's no safety glass. Protect anybody behind the corner where anybody stands. Right?
It prevents entry.
If somebody comes in in a wheelchair, those counters are not ADA uh compliant.
Hey, if you can come up with a plan to redo the entire city hall, I'm all for it, Councilman.
When you do renovations and add to something, you gotta you gotta come be compliant.
Yeah.
Let's let's.
One more thing?
Guys, I want to wrap this up.
Well, when I came in tonight, that swinging door was open. I had to close it.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Uh so what are you guys gonna do? Do we want to go up for uh bids on two more? Because that's what the policy procedure, I think we've all argued that.
Yes.
Or do you want to make a vote on this?
I prefer tableing.
Okay.
For more bids.
Councilwoman Breyer, are you willing to table this?
I I agree, we should table.
Okay, Councilman Constance, will you second that? Okay, uh all in favor, please state aye to table this. Tableing and referring back to administration, I'm sorry. Get this to three beds and come back. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Ordnance Enforcement Animal Control Director Latif. Animal Sheltering Agreement Extension.
Council Chair.
Councilman.
Uh I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the first amendment to the animal sheltering agreement between the city and Michigan Humane Society, which will extend. The current contract to December thirty first, twenty twenty seven. In addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the documents on behalf of the city. And the treasurer to issue payments from animal uh pro GL one oh one, four two six, eight oh six, zero zero zero. In addition, authorize a budget amendment to increase GL account one oh one, four two six, eight zero. Six, zero 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 by twenty five thousand and decrease the part time GL account one oh one. Four two six, seven zero seven, one zero zero as outlined in nine dash D.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Constant. Any discussion on that?
Uh Council Chair, first question, uh when it says decreased the part time by how much though? Doesn't say.
Twelve, I was gonna ask for twenty six, so we have a little extra in there. I've got forty thousand nine hundred in my part time budget. And if we decrease it by at least twenty six, it'll still give me my part timer for the grass for the summer and still leave a little money in there. Which I'm probably gonna have to come back to you guys on for my overtime budget is down to nine hundred dollars. Um so I'm gonna have to take a little bit out of that to cover that.
Okay, so I um move to uh amend this motion to uh. Decrease the part time GL account four two six, seven zero seven, one hundred by twenty six thousand as outlined in nine dash D. Is that sufficient, Madam Clerk? And Council Chair, I understand that uh I know this contract is for three years, but we can cancel.
I I I had a conversation with Doug from uh Michigan Humane Society. Um you know, we went back and forth. He did change the contract on us. We're still saving some money, still a little bit higher. What we agreed to was. We're not, there's no, you know, clause in there that says we are forced to stay here.
I was told six months. We have a six month.
We could do six months with them, get us by, and then if, you know, we can find something, who knows, maybe even open up our own animal shelter.
Well, we've been talking with other cities uh last month. We talked, we're gonna talk in uh in April. About trying to get a consortium for all these local cities to get together, find a place and figure out how we can do this. So we're working on it. Like I said, it's gonna take some time and a little money in the end, but.
I just don't want us to sleep on this for three years and we're paying, you know, fifteen thousand dollars a month.
We're meeting month to month. So I, like I said, it's.
Couple of times a month. Even in an email.
So.
How many, how many cities, Director?
What's that?
How many cities are talking to?
Uh we're looking at, I think, Canton, Livonia, Westland, Redford. I forgot to the two cities, but yeah, there's there's, they're all they're all in the same place we are and uh. They're having to bite the bullet as well, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion?
Chair.
Yep.
I I would add, um in those cities, we all tried an R F T back in October. The only one that applied to do an R F T was the Humane Society.
I know.
But all the cities didn't work together to try to get something.
And it's it's terrible because like the Humane Society explained to themselves like they have overhead, they have costs. And like there's only so much that they can do. Like these animals need veterinarians, they need, you know, the proper facility and caging and employees and lighting and. So like, I get it.
I wa- I even tried going back to Taylor last week and schmooze them, trying to get back with them. And they said it's gonna be at least two months anyways before they can open theirs and they're not taking anybody else. But I tried.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Council Chair.
Yep.
Um I think this is for the director. Now, you're increasing the GL by twenty five and decreasing by twenty six?
No, no, no. I think we're taking twenty five out of my part time budget.
Okay.
Twenty five thousand and we're gonna put it into the. We're gonna put it in into the animal pro account one oh one, four two six, eight oh six.
I thought he was saying twenty six from the part time, so he can use the extra thousand for something to go with.
Well, no, I said that was because with the animals, if we take in wildlife. And we take in other things or if there's any emergencies, there could be a little few costs in there, not quite to the exact amount that it's monthly. So I didn't want to just go to the exact dollar in case we have like a wildlife we take in and they start charging us for. That we have the money to cover it, that's all.
Okay, so you so you need twenty six, not twenty five.
Twenty six, we get twenty six out of my part time account, if you guys allow it.
Okay.
That'd be perfect and it'll cover any extra costs we have for the animal shelter at the end of the, at the end of the.
We're increasing, okay, I'm gonna go ahead and amend my motion to increase GL account one oh one, four two six, eight zero six, zero 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 by twenty six thousand. And decreasing uh twenty six thousand of the part time GL account one oh one, four two six, seven zero seven. One zero 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 as outlined in nine dash D.
Thank you, correct.
Thank you.
Alright, Councilman Constance, do you second it?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussions? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries.
Council Chair.
Real quick question, my director's up there. I know that it's not the hot topic, it was the trailer park and I know they went in there. Give us a real quick update on what happened.
Can we have him, he can do that uh when it comes to my announcements from administration.
That's at the end though and a lot of people, either way, it's gonna take a time.
I I know, let's get through this, but right now we're on city business. We can, we can give.
Business.
An agenda, an an agenda item. Yes, he can give us an update on that after.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Parks and Recreation Director Zabens. Please forgive me, Mr. Zabans.
That's fine. I mean, I'm gonna get it right, I promise you. Uh, Summerfest twenty twenty five liquor license application.
Give me forever to see the Vanegas.
Councilor Chair?
Go ahead, Bob.
Go ahead. Councilwoman Breyer, ladies first, first.
Oh, wow. I'll make the motion that the Durban Heights City Council authorize the application to obtain a special license from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission to serve alcohol outdoors at the Canfield Community Center for the annual Durban Heights Summerfest scheduled for June five dash eight, twenty twenty five, as outlined in nine E.
Second, motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have nine F, Clerk's Office Election Budget Amendment.
Councilor Chair?
Councilman?
I move that the Durban Heights City Council approve the following amendment to the election budget as outlined in nine dash F. I need to, second.
Why, why here, from account number one oh one?
Account number one oh one, one nine zero nine eight one zero zero zero, capital A O L A, requested amount fifty seven thousand, amend, amended budget's fifty seven thousand. Uh, account number one oh one, zero zero zero, six two six, zero three zero, election grant reimbursement, requested amount eighty four, three twenty eighty cents. Amendment budget eighty four, three hundred and twenty dollars and eighty cents. Uh, receiving two grants that will cover the cost to pay for four debigators and other equipment.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, I want to say Constant, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Uh, Madam Clerk, do you have anything on this for us?
Just real quick, there is gonna be other ones coming in, but this is not out of the fund balance. These are, the fifty seven thousand is the two grants that you already received and we approved, to the thirty thousand dollars from, um, was a nonpartisan organization. And the twenty seven thousand, which was an election security grant, which was through the state.
Thank you.
And then the other one is revenues that we got in for those grant and other.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Comptroller Shepherd, Comptroller's Office Budget Amendment.
Councilor Chair for discussion?
Okay.
I make a motion that the Durban Heights City Council approves the following amendment to the Comptroller's Office Budget as outlined in nine G. From account one oh one dash two two three dash nine six two dot zero zero zero, the name of that account is Training. Current budget is one thousand, the requested amount is ten thousand, so the amended budget would be eleven thousand. And then there's a note somewhere. Oh, and it means contractual fringe benefit policy for tuition reimbursement.
Where'd you get that letter from?
Because you got a one over here and you got a one over here.
This is a note, and that's a footnote.
A footnote. All right, then the next item, uh, from account one oh one dash two two three dash seven oh nine dot zero zero zero, which is overtime, there is no current budget, they're requesting a thousand, so the amended budget would be a thousand. And then from account one oh one dash two two three dash seven oh six zero zero zero, salaries. The current budget is four hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty nine dollars, the requested amount is minus one thousand. So we come out to four hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty nine dollars. And then from account one oh one dash zero 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 dash six nine nine dash zero zero, uh, yeah, zero, oh, dot zero zero zero. Uh, the application from, or I think it's being taken from fund balance, the requested amount is ten thousand.
Second, motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by. Councilman Constant, any discussion? Hearing none? One thousand dollar per, uh, from the fund balance, all in favor, please state aye.
I think we just amended, uh, Councilor Chair, it's only a thousand for the training, and a thousand for the overtime. Uh, we did amend the salaries, we took the salaries down by a thousand, so basically we're just amending for one thousand.
No.
Right now.
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
For ten, ten thousand there too.
Ten thousand dollars right here, look. We came in here, amending budget for a thousand, but we're going up to ten.
Oh, you're right.
So we're going up to eleven thousand dollars, but then we lowered the salary for, from a thousand, so really you're only using a ten thousand dollar amendment. There's a ten thousand dollar from, and it's coming from the fund balance. And I think, uh, you know, Comptroller Shepherd for letting you know that it's coming from there. The original amendment is eleven thousand dollars.
Right.
We're lowering a thousand dollars from the employment, and then we're asking for ten thousand dollars from the fund balance. This is for training.
Actually, I think it's for tuition, it's for the, for the comptroller, for her contract.
What's that?
Yeah, she had.
Shannon?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that, you're correct, so that the ten thousand is for, for, from the, um, the employment contract for tuition reimbursement. Um, and then the thousand from, I'm just moving from salaries to overtime. So there's a, a net zero effect between those two accounts, and then, um, the ten thousand is being requested from fund balance, because when the budget was created this, in past year, um, obviously no one knew that I would be taking advantage of that policy to, um, get tuition reimbursement, so, you know, had, had that been known, it would have been presented in the budget, but the reason I'm asking for an amendment is because, um, it, it wasn't allocated at that time.
Thank you.
Right, so her contract says that's her contract. I mean, I guess we gotta take a look at that contract. Did you ever see it?
Councilor Chair?
Councilman Wanso?
Is this money for, uh, tuition reimbursement, it's already been paid by the employees by themselves, or?
Yeah.
They've already, they, they turned in bills?
It's not on, can you turn it on?
Okay, sorry, thank you. Oh, it is right.
Yeah. So it's exactly ten thousand?
Um, I don't know what the specific, I can open it, um, I'm sorry.
It's in the backup, and it's, uh.
You know what I'm saying, it's exactly.
What she's requesting is ten thousand, but I don't believe there is a specific amount that's set in the fringe benefits, um.
And, and we have a ruling, and it's nothing against Shannon, I think, believe this was when the former police chief was here, we let him know it had to be a written request approved by council before the classes started. That was the rule, that's the ruling on that.
So that is not in our fringe benefit policies. So that was a request that that council put, but it is not an actual policy that is in place in the organization, um, and.
I think it's always been the rule for non-publicity, I'm gonna say something, I'm getting that. Take the class as long as they pass, that is better.
That was, um, my letters, I think.
Hang on, please go to the council chair, please. The coun, the councilman is still on there, so let's hold off for a second.
You want me to respond?
No, please don't. And, and Councilman, Councilman as well, please go to the chair, thank you. Councilman Wanso, are you done, or?
I was waiting, um, and, yeah, you, you said that these benefits are for all elected officials?
Elected and non-union.
We have that benefit as.
Yeah, I'm married with a school from being on city council.
I don't know if it applies for non-full-time employees, but it does apply for, for the.
I'm married with a school here. I have an associate's degree on behalf of the city of Durban Heights. Great for him, amazing.
Yeah, that question has never come up to me, and I'm, I'm not sure, it says elected officials and non-union employees in the, in the policy itself.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilor Chair. Are you all set?
Yep.
Thank you, Councilman Constant.
I'm all set.
All right.
Yeah, Councilor Chair?
Yes.
No disrespect to you, uh, I did look at the letters from two thousand and three, and, um, Councilman, um, Constant is correct, with Ruth Canfield actually passed it and opened it up to the, the, um, uh, the city employees. And it was a nice diatribe about why it's important to educate our employees and our staff.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? I, I will say, I'm all for supporting education, one hundred percent. Think it's very, very important, it's, it's a pivotal thing in, in, in society, be well-educated and well-versed and well-rounded. Reality is, I think, when, when, you know, Ruth Canfield was doing this, I believe she was doing this because our, our employment, your wages were beyond low. I can promise you, in two thousand, nobody was making eighty-five, ninety, or a hundred thousand dollars from the city. They said, go to school, get, you know, get a couple of credits, which credits were probably half the price. That's something that the city also has to look into. Um, you know, for the sake, and, look, tough decisions have to be made. The city is moving in a direction where very expensive. But now we're put in a position, you here have a contractual obligation, which we've never seen. It says, somebody goes to school, it's a director, you have to, the city has to pay for it. We're not saying no, we're also saying the city doesn't got the money to afford to do that. This is the reality, this is, this is, this is the hand who we were dealt. You pay it, you have no money. You're taking from your fund balance. You don't pay it, you put yourself in a, in a situation where you can be sued. What do you do? And, and really, I hate that it came down to, right towards the end of the year, while the, when the discussion has been, we know, I think I just had the conversation with Councilman Wanso, we know we're in a, in a very tough position. And like, what do we do? Councilman Wanso, like, don't pay any more bills for the rest of the year. I told him, no, we have contractual obligations. Like, that's not, that's not a solution. It sounds great, and he's kinda right, like, let's put a halt on everything, just say, stop. What is happening? What can we afford, what can we not? How do we, you know, allow things to go, how do we allow, allow things to go in? This here, is supposedly, there's a contract.
Councilor Chair?
Yep.
I know it's a, it's a tough decision, but either we need to approve everything or not approve anything, because they all has contract too. I mean, it is a tough decision, but.
Yep, Councilman, are you done here, Councilman?
I'll say it.
Councilman Conson?
I, I remember we discussed many times about hiring from within, and I think it's, it's not a lot of money, and I think it's a, it's a big advantage.
Councilman, but we're totally limited in our funds. Well, then if you say, wouldn't you, but wouldn't you finally say, we can't afford this anymore? When do we finally say it? Cause if you say yes to this, then how are you gonna say no to the remain? Because this helps the department operate better. The, the department, we're blessed that we have Shannon, to be honest. And so the department's moving in a great direction. But rightfully so, Shannon is feeling, when she took this class, cities reimbursed it like they have in the past for other people. I don't know, this is, I mean, I'd love to hear somebody else's opinion on it. If not, we could take this to a vote.
Councilor Chair?
Councilman?
Maybe if we can, uh, start cutting from the departments, if there's money available, other places in the department, we can cover that. Well, like I, the council, uh, Pro Tem said, that, I mean, I'm completely against borrowing money from the fund balance completely. I mean, we gave a balanced budget. It was a balanced budget that we approved. Whatever the administration, how recklessly they were with spending, and, uh, pretty much baiting us into approving things, then they never said was into fund balance. That's something they gotta deal with. But for me, it's a tough decision, but you also gotta remember, you represent sixty seven, sixty seven thousand residents and their tax numbers.
Councilor Chair?
It's true, Councilman.
Um, I, I don't have the budget in front of me, but was, was there a training, pardon the budget for this department? Balance for training?
I think there was.
Nothing?
Yeah, it was a thou, it was a thousand, a thousand dollars.
And I know we talked about, anytime someone goes into a class, they should get approval from city council, we talked about that with the place, and, and some, something that happened like about a year ago, I can't remember which one it was, um, other things coming up, are they contractual, uh, situations there too?
Let's find out. All right, well, let's take this to a vote.
Chair? Yes, Councilman. And one other thing, quickly, I mean, the employee takes a risk, if they take the class and they don't pass, they, they eat the bill. So if she took the class, she passed.
You know, you know another thing that can happen here, administration, find a way, amend other budgets, cut fat from other places.
Yes.
And, and potentially find the money for it.
That's what I'm saying.
We have the backup for these, um, classes, should be in our agenda, the backup.
It, it was in the backup, I, I mean.
I looked too, it's not there.
Wasn't there.
And usually we require the backup, the pool of things, don't.
Yeah. I think there's some misinformation still that we still need, and I don't think this is on Shannon specifically.
No.
This is, I think, us just kinda making a decision.
Well, we ask for backup on everything else, why else ask for backup on this?
Well, there's gonna, there's a vote on the table to either prove it or deny it.
We refer it back for backup?
Okay, we can refer this back to administra, we can refer it back to the administration for a proper backup. If, if Councilwoman Breyer wants to amend that motion, seconded by Councilman Constant?
Yes.
Councilman Constant, can you second that?
That's fine.
All right, refer this back, get the proper backups, send it back to the admin, or send it back to us, the next city councilman. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. This, this is, this is, that was a very sensitive topic. Next up is DPW Director, Dancy DPW Highway Budget Amendment. Somebody, anybody.
Councilor Chair?
Councilman?
I move that the Durban Heights City Council approve the following amendment to the DPW Highway Budget as outlined in nine dash H. One oh one, account number one oh one, four four zero, seven oh nine, zero zero zero, overtime. Current budget hundred thousand, requested amount hundred and fifty five thousand. Amendment budget would be two hundred and fifty five thousand. Account number one oh one, four four zero, eight two zero, zero zero zero. Account name, three removal. Current budget hundred and forty thousand, requested amount thirty thousand, amended budget hundred and seventy thousand. Uh, account number one oh one, zero zero zero, six nine nine, zero zero zero. Account name, uh, app from fund balance.
Applied from.
Applied from fund balance. Current budget is none, requested amount would be hundred and eighty five thousand, requested by Director Dancy.
This is, this is another thing. We are put in a position, or trees, we are going to be, you know, residents are gonna call all of us. The trees are gonna, gonna be, you know, brought down, and overtime is gonna be asked. Here, we're asking for a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars from the fund balance. Finally, we're being told it's coming from the fund balance, because up until last week, we never knew there was coming out of a fund balance.
Councilor Chair, did we get a second on that one?
No. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad.
Okay, sorry.
Second advice, second. Councilman Wanso, any discussion?
Councilor Chair?
Councilman?
You know, I, I was out yesterday driving around, and I seen the highway department fixing all the potholes that everyone's complaining about. And I was talking to them, and they said, uh.
You told them get out of the way, I was on the phone with you.
He says, you know, unfortunately, come, you know, quitting time, whatever, you know, three thirty, whatever, they gotta go home. You know, in the past, we, they did their job, and had overtime, they, they did their job, finished it. And we have so many, I, I don't think there's anyone up here that didn't get a complaint about potholes, or everybody's, or, I, I don't think anyone here has not hit a pothole in the city driving around. Um, this is pretty tough, and I think this is a, this is a, something that, I, I'm in favor of this. I mean, this is something that's, I mean, it's right out there, it's physical, it's something that everyone encounters, encounters every day. And it's a, you can open yourself up for lawsuits, what's the complaints made about a pothole? It's, it's registered, and someone hits that pothole, does damage to their car, the city's open, open for a lawsuit because it wasn't repaired. Um, so, this is one I'm in favor of, I don't know, I will look at the rest of them. But, uh, I think that this, the DPW department, they do a fantastic job, they're the unsung heroes in our city, and, uh, we give them whatever we can.
Do you wanna use a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars from the fund balance?
I will, I mean.
Let me ask you a question.
What?
Are you gonna be able to save no, two hundred fifty, four hundred thousand dollars for the police, because you can't leave people?
Depends on what that is, I mean.
Overtime.
Right now. I know, the overtime, but I mean.
Can we do two hundred fifty thousand dollars for the fire department?
Well, we've got it, you know, we, yeah, we've gotta come up, we've gotta pay these, we gotta pay these people. I mean, I don't know how we come up with the money, if we've got it in there. We've got it, we've got to take care of it.
Using our fund balance, which is at eight percent.
Yeah.
And then you know what's gonna happen is, when, when the fund balance goes through like Act three forty-five money, which is restricted funds, which has also in your fund balance, and it has to be at four million, once you give, fly through this remaining, you can say, well, you guys approved it.
Well, I'll tell you, I mean, that's.
I agree with you, we have to have this stuff. These are, these, you promised residents, you were gonna give them city services, I wholeheartedly agree.
Let's have the administration figure it out, uh, get the money.
But they're not, they're, they, they did. They're telling you, we're gonna take it from the fund balance.
I know, but I mean, pass that, how it's gonna work, how they're gonna work it out. Besides, I mean.
Hang on, let the councilman finish.
I mean, our, our job is to approve all these things, and we don't have the sole responsibility of all the money, we do, we vote on it, we, you know, yes or no. But it's up to other departments and administration to come to us with ideas they have to solve these problems.
I, 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 I am one hundred percent in agreement with you, I want to see the councilman, if that's okay. Um, I'm, I'm in, I'm in agreement with you. Let's just keep this in mind, a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, they didn't give us a solution. They said, we're going to take it from our rainy D fund. That's what the administration is telling us. They, they didn't give you a solution, they, they didn't, and you're right. Every single one of us here are getting phone calls about potholes, every single one of us.
Councilor Chair?
I, I'm good, I'll listen, I'll listen to everyone else, I'll listen.
Is this?
I'll listen to. Well, it's Councilman Sob, Matt.
Yeah, yeah, I said, I'll listen to the rest of them.
Okay, are you all set?
Yes, thank you.
Councilor Chair, go back again to, we passed a balanced budget. All these extra positions that created, we're now part of the budget. We did, we made all these cuts to balance the budget, the city almost shut down, and now here we are, you're trying to tell me, let's approve one point seven, one point eight million dollars from the rainy fund. What solution? We're just bleeding money, Council, uh, Pro Tem, I'm sorry. We're bleeding money, so you're going to approve one, you're saying it's important, but not the other. The others are much more important than this, to be honest with you, I'm not saying that any department is not important. But you also have to be, uh, physically responsible, financially responsible. That we gave the administration a balanced budget. Now they come, we found out that we've been approving contracts from the fund balance that was never mentioned from the fund balance. And once you approve it, and we come back and say, the only thing they, Mariana said to us last week was, well, you approved it. And you're okay with that?
Councilor Chair, can, can we eliminate this?
Hang on one second, hang on one second.
So, so my thing is that, when you look down, you read, you go under your eight percent, and just like Councilor Chair said, you start waging money from Act three forty-five and all that. Then when we get to that point, then what are we going to say? Oh, the overtime that we start to give people, now we're affecting every other employee in the city, every retiree. That's, that's, you got to think about it in the long run, where we, you were elected to be responsible, physically responsible on behalf of the, physically responsible on behalf of the residents. And they saying this, and they're telling you here, vote on it, but they're not coming with a solution. Is there money that they can trim out other places in the city, just like we did when we sat here for a month, almost month and a half with the budget? We trimmed down everything, but it was a balanced budget.
Was a surplus.
Yeah, actually, it was a surplus of law, seven.
Three hundred thousand.
Where's that money?
Councilor Chair?
Uh, I mean, I'm just responding.
Okay, you want to respond, is that okay, Councilwoman Breyer? Thank you.
Well, you know, it, it's our responsibility too, to come up with a plan. I mean, maybe these, 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 uh, these positions that we feel were illegally or, or, where it's created not with our approval.
Be careful, there's a federal injunction.
I know, but I mean, we, maybe we could just vote on eliminating that pay from the rest of the.
Yeah, we did, that, that's why we're in court.
I mean, on, on different positions too, I mean, anything else.
Like what?
I don't know, I mean, that's what we have to look into, I mean, we can't just put it all on administration, it's, it's our responsibility too, to not just to say no, we should, we, we should come up with a plan too, that we can give the administration.
Councilor Chair?
I have no idea what it is, but I mean, we could put our heads together, or, you know, outside information, outside ideas.
I will tell you though, this is not me taking a shot at the administration. Our tree removal was at seventy thousand dollars, at the budget, I would not, I didn't allow us to go into there with a seventy thousand dollar tree trimming, remember, I had the back and forth with the former director, we moved it up to one forty. Now we're taking it up an additional thirty, which is a good thing, that means we're all doing work. The reality is, the, the, the former DPW Director said, mo, we're not going to need seventy thousand dollars. And I said, we're going to go to one forty, and we doubled it, we went from seventy thousand to one forty, now we're going up to one, to one seventy, we're adding an additional thirty thousand dollars. I mean, a hundred thousand dollars to get us to, I mean, and then, I mean, look, we need, you need to have overtime. You need to allow DPW to go out and do their job, you're going to need overtime for the police department, you're going to need overtime for the fire department. We can't tell our city, no, truth is, the administration needs to make some certain decisions, instead of saying, well, we're just going to use the fund balance. Because that's not the solution.
Councilor Chair?
Yeah, I'm just going to say one last thing, and then we're going to go to Councilwoman Breyer, but the truth is, how many lawsuits are we in? How much money do we have in lawsuits? Take the two million dollars in lawsuits that we've had, the two hundred fifty, settlement's here, settlement's there, settlement's here, take all that settlement, and here you got overtime for every department. That's where your solution is, that's where you're bleeding and hemorrhaging from. Councilwoman Breyer?
Uh, I see it doesn't include the, uh, water main breaks too, because we're, we're in real trouble with that.
It's a water fund.
Yeah, but it's the same department, Mr. Dancy has all those headaches. Uh, so I have a couple possibilities where we could make money, but I was waiting until the end of the meeting when it's our turn to talk about them.
And make money?
Yes.
I love that, let's come up with it.
All right, I, I, I was doing a lot of research, uh, last week or so, and I'm suggesting that, like, Warren is voting on, uh, facilities for the, uh, gummies and all that kind of stuff, making money, we don't have it in our city, it's legal now, we could make a lot of money.
Like what?
If, if we allowed, uh.
Dispensaries.
The dispensary items. Have our own, well, yeah, but they're going to other cities who are making money. It's a possibility, and we bring some in, and another possibility is, uh, and for our area that we already own, at near Inkster and Van Horn, the front end, almost two hundred feet of, uh, the old scenery site, we could do farm markets. And at that site.
Councilman Wenzel's working on that.
Yeah, and well, I, I, into, uh, with our city engineer. And he locks the other part of it, that area would be open, and we could have vendors and make some money.
I love that idea.
So, that's a possibility.
That means it's going to get us a hundred thousand dollars in a month.
Well, it'll get us something.
How big is it?
Over two hundred foot frontage, it's usable, for a farmer's market.
Good idea. Uh, are you all set?
Yes, yes.
Councilman, uh.
Thank you, Councilor Chair, I, I just wanted to point again, the sheet that was given by the treasurer, if you look at it at the bottom, by June, our fund bal, fund balance would be one five nine nine. That's with no amendment. So if you pay money today, will be less than zero by June, at no money in the city.
Now you'll be in a negative.
A negative, well, hold on, if we give this, you're saying here.
This is without paying anybody, without no amendments, we're going to be at one five nine nine by June.
One point five, one point six.
Five point six by June. This is with paying nothing, not amending anything, so imagine if we, we pay today, we're here, we're going to be in a negative by June.
We don't have a million on the table today. Million, I mean, on these things here, do we?
Yeah, one point seven, one point seven.
No, if you don't.
We'll be in the negatives.
On the agenda tonight?
One point seven, one point seven.
One point seven total?
Yeah, we, we split them, we split all the motions separately, uh, if you add them all together, about one point seven.
But we only have one point five to use. I mean, listen, we're going to have to take this up for a vote, at the end of the day.
Councilor Chair, take on for a vote.
Um, and again, this is, these are tough decisions, I don't think there's a right or wrong answer. Really isn't. You know, we want our roads to be fixed, can we get it, can you, can you finish by three thirty? Sure you can, there's a water main break happening in the middle of the night, nobody's coming out until the morning. There's no overtime. Maybe we can amend it so we can say, we can do twenty, twenty-five thousand instead of a hundred, get us somewhere? You know?
Take away the trees.
All right, let's just take this to a vote, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Wenzel. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
See, Tom Win, Tom Wenzel?
Yes.
Austin Sab?
No.
Nancy Breyer?
No.
Robert Coniston?
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
No.
Hassan Ahmad?
No.
Will Meej?
No.
Motion feels.
These are, these are tough decisions, really is, like. I mean, I'd, I'd love the administration to come back and say, hey, we're able to find certain monies in a different way, you know? Can't go into, we can't operate in a deficit, guys. Next up is DPW Director Dancy, Major Street Budget Amendment.
Councilor Chair?
Councilman?
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approved the following amendment, amendment to the Major Streets Budget as outlined in nine I, count number two oh two, two oh two eight eight zero seven zero zero. Um, current local, current budget is two million five hundred thousand, requested budget is a hundred and fifty thousand, amended budget is two million six hundred and fifty thousand. Um, it was, uh, one received more than what we budgeted for, therefore the transfer to local roads is, uh, needs to be increased.
Second. Made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Constant.
Councilor Chair?
What do you mean by received more than we budgeted for, therefore received?
We, this, so this is coming from Act fifty-nine money?
Okay.
Money for major street and roads, and so if we assume that they were going to get two point five, we end up getting two point six fifty, so we got an additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So there's no, so receiving more than what you budgeted for, therefore the transfer to lots, so we're asking to just approve the increase of the, uh, local needs of, of increase.
Okay, so this is not coming.
This is state money.
So it's not coming from the fund balance?
Nothing, this is okay to approve. Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Constant, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We just receive a hundred and fifty thousand dollars return.
All that's for that money.
That's from state, that's state, state roads, major and local streets, repairs. Next up is DPW Director Dancy, Water and Sewer Budget Amendment. Good luck, whoever's reading this one.
Chair?
Councilwoman Breyer?
Ahmad and I get the long ones. Okay, uh, I make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the following amendment to the Water and Sewer Budget as outlined in nine J. From account five nine two dash five three seven dash nine eight one dot one zero zero, the name of the account is a twenty twenty-four CWSRF project cost. The requested amount is four million, four hundred sixty thousand, nine hundred seventy-four dollars and seventy cents. The amended budget, oh, it's equal.
It's equal across the playboard.
Yes, oh, but there's a note.
Read all three, all four notes, please.
And you want the vote, uh, the, the note to go with the item I'm discussing?
Well, I want you to read the one, two, three, and four.
Okay, all right, all right, then I'll read, uh, from account five nine two, five three seven, nine eight one dash two hundred, from the DWSRF water meter.
No, no, I'm sorry, you just got to read the footnote.
Well, that's what I was.
Yeah, because it's the current budget, it's requested in the same.
Okay, so, uh, back to the first one, uh, the project cost, the note says, bid already approved in motion twenty-four dash two two two, this is to just, to amend the budget for that amount, this amount won't be fully spent this year, remainder will carry over to next year. Okay, then on two, we have five, the account number five nine two dash five three seven dash nine eight one dash two hundred, the DWRF water meter replacement, requested amount, oh, glad we should have done it before, thirteen million, seven hundred eighty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents, the amended budget reads the same, and number two motion, uh, footnote is, bid already approved, this is to amend the budget for expenditures, amount won't be fully spent in fiscal year twenty-five and will carry forward. Now, item three is five nine two dash five three seven dash nine eight one, uh, dot two zero one, and that's the DWSRF water main, and the requested amount is sixteen million, three hundred fifty-nine thousand, one hundred fifteen dollars and forty cents, the amended, amended budget remains the same. The footnote, motion's twenty-four dash three one six and twenty-four dash five one four, bid already approved. This is to amend budget for expenditures, amount won't be fully spent, and fiscal year twenty-five will carry forward. The final one, account number five nine two dash five three seven dash nine eight one dot two zero two, DWSRF lead pipe replacement. And that requested amount is thirteen million, seven hundred two thousand, six hundred eighty-eight and twenty-nine cents. The amended budget is the same, the footnote is that the, uh, from motion two four three one five, the bid was already approved. This is to amend budget for expenditures, amount won't be fully spent in fiscal year twenty-five and will carry forward.
Uh, support?
Okay.
Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Sorry, my alarm went off, it was supposed to be at seven thirty in the morning, not at seven twenty. I'm saying, I always slept today.
Um, you get up at seven? Wow, that's sleeping in.
Hey, it's Ramadan too, all right, we're up until three, four in the morning. We're going to sleep by seven. Yeah, all in favor, or well, any discussion on this?
Basically, Councilor Chair, we're not getting any money from the fund balance here, we're just moving money from the water, uh, funds to the.
Things that we've already approved for, already budgeted for.
Hundred percent.
Correct. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is the, is the fun stuff, you guys ready for this stuff?
More long ones, oh my god.
There you go. Let me just see, is that only nine K? Nine K Fire Chief Rogan, Fire Department Budget Amendment. Rogan's like sitting there staring at us, who's going to read this one?
I can do it again.
All right.
All right, the motion is that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the following amendment to the Fire Department Budget as outlined in nine K. From account one oh one dash three three five dash six, seven oh six dot zero zero zero, which is salaries, the current budget is four million, four hundred ninety thousand, five hundred twelve dollars. The requested amount is three hundred thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred eighty-five dollars, which makes the amended budget four million, eight hundred twenty-eight dollars, three hundred ninety-seven. And our footnote is per CBA, is that Council something? Uh, motion two four dash three four eight, the budget accounted for a ten percent increase, but there was actually a seventeen percent increase. All right, item two, account number one oh one dash three three five dash seven two six dot zero zero zero, fringe benefits. Current budget is four hundred thirty-three thousand, eight hundred eighty-five dollars. The requested amount is twenty-five thousand, eight hundred forty-nine dollars, bringing the amended budget to four hundred fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred thirty-four dollars. Uh, footnote is the same as the last one, instead of a ten percent increase, it was seventeen. Item three, account one oh one dash three three five dash nine eight one dot zero zero zero, capital outlay. There is no current budget, the requested amount is now twenty-two thousand, five hundred, so that would be the amended budget. And the footnote is environmental cleanup for two fire stations and a gear rack. All right, and we are at, uh, item four, one oh one dash three three five dash nine six two dot zero zero zero, training. Current budget is forty thousand, good news, requested amount is takeaway twenty-five hundred dollars, which takes the amended budget down to thirty-seven thousand, five hundred, and that's the same footnote, it's cleanup for two fire stations and gear rack. Uh, five is budget number one zero one dash three three five dash seven zero nine dot zero zero zero, overtime. The current budget is seven hundred and fourteen thousand, and the requested amount is three hundred thousand, making the amended budget one million, fourteen thousand dollars. And our footnote is injuries and slower than anticipated hiring, that's being changed, isn't it?
Chief Rogan?
You want to talk now, or you want the last item thrown in there?
Just continue to read on it.
All right, the last one is account number one oh one dash zero 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 dash six nine nine, uh, dot zero zero zero, and that's applied from fund balance. There is no current budget, and our requested amount is six hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred thirty-four dollars, again, injuries is slower than anticipated hiring.
Yep, so, so obviously, the, the, the big number there is.
Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by.
Second.
Councilman Constant. Any discussion?
Yep, go ahead. So, so the, the, the biggest number, I mean, the, the first two lines, you see the, this, when they say the CBA, that's the, uh, our, our contract, the collective bargaining agreement. And so, when the, when the budget was submitted, I think it hadn't been finalized yet, and I think they, they made a guess at what the, what the raises were going to be, if I remember right, I'm trying to remember why, why this is, um, why they put ten percent, and it was actually a seventeen percent raise, but that's where that came in. The, the overtime is the, is the, is the other big one, and that is because we, we were trying to get the hiring done, I thought we were going to have them in the door. When, when we, when we submitted the budget, it certainly looked, looked that way, and then there've been some delays. Um, we're now down, we would be down one, but we had someone retire, kind of unexpectedly, and now we're, we're down two positions, those offers have been made and, and accepted, and so they're in the hiring process, and hopefully those last two will be in the door here shortly. We've taken the time that, that, uh, for the, for the new firefighters to get to manpower status, and we, we've compressed it, I've talked to other departments around and saw kind of what the standard was, and we're trying to, in a safe manner, get them, get them where they're counted as full staffing sooner, so we can, we can cut this overtime as, as quickly as we can. We're, we're taking every steps we can, I know the budget for next year is going to be much improved, I really, it's going to be cut by fifty, fifty percent, I would say, the, the overtime budget, so there is a solution in place. We just have to, you know, ride out this, this last little bit, we're, we're so close, we're almost there. Um, and this, this is, the, the overtime is also, uh, contractual obligations. Um, we're just doing to, to, to staff the trucks to a minimum level, and, uh, and we have, you know, if we have to close down a squad, it's going to be, you know, felt almost immediately, we have, we have one, one squad in the north end that's staffed, and two, or one squad in the south end, and two squads in the north end. The nor, the south end squad does about nine runs a day, the south end squads do about eight runs a day, so that's sixteen runs in the north end on its own. If, and that's where we'd have to cut one of those squads, one squad can't handle sixteen runs a day, the south end will be coming up to. The south end will be coming up to, to try to pick up the slack, they're doing nine runs a day already, we'd be missing runs left and right. Then we'll be running all over trying to, trying to make up the difference, we'd be calling mutual aid, we can only call them so many times. Um, it would be, there will be delays in service, and then so, and, and it would break the contract, there'd be an immediate grievance, and we'd be right, we'd, we'd end up stuck in the position of staffing these positions, which. So it's operationally necessary, contractually necessary, and, and the, the, the good news is, is that we do have a solution, and we're almost there. Just ask for you to hold, hold on with us for just a little bit longer until we get there.
I, I had a conversation with Chief Rogan, I gave him a call, and kinda gave him an earful a little bit.
Yes, you did.
Apologize.
No, I understand, I, I understand the position you guys are in, and, and I wish, had I known this, I would've given you a bigger number at, at the beginning of the year, and it would've been something you could work with, but it just took longer. It's, you know, the, when I do this budget, it's a guess, and I'm making the guess for next year now, if you think of it, it, you know, we're, we're submitting our budgets now, it won't even start till July, and we're looking till next July, so we're hoping, I mean, our staffing level should be good by then, but.
You know, and I, I just wanna add, we here on the council have said, we wanna make sure that the conditions of these fire stations are brought up. Like, that, that is important to me. Um, but I'll tell you, like I said for the rest, overtime, contractual obligations or not, that's on you as the director, as the chief, hold those things, you know, and those responsibilities. And I, I had that conversation with you, and like, you know how I feel about you, the world's greatest fire chief, the world's greatest chief in the world.
I, I appreciate that, I understand, and I do understand your position, if, but if we, if we got these guys in the door sooner, then the estimate of overtime would, I mean, the budget line I gave you would've been correct.
What took you guys so long?
Uh, the, the process.
I felt like it was three years.
Yeah, there's, well, well, once we got the, the contract signed, then that's when we got a good number of applicants, but, um, we, they can only bring in so many at, at one time. And so they're trying to get them through the door, and there's the, the background process, and, uh, and the physical, psychological, and they just have to get through these, these steps. I, I wish we could've brought them all in at one time, um, it's just proven to be, uh, a challenge, so.
Any other discussion, the chair, Councilman? Weren't we budgeted for the maximum amount of firefighters?
So we, traditionally, we've always been budgeted for that amount, and when we, when we submitted this time, um, we, we said that we would, we would adjust to make sure that we got there, but, but for the, for the budget that was submitted, they, they, uh, they didn't initially have all those positions filled in there. Even though they said we were going to account for them once, once we got them in the door, so.
Was, was there money that wasn't spent in the budget for ones that we were, uh, we would have?
You know, I, I have to check with the comptroller, but I, I don't, I don't believe that was the case this year.
What was your question, Councilman? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Oh, I wanna know if we, that we had budgeted for the maximum amount of firefighters. I believe we did, but I think they may have used it. Can you give us a quick update on the, the personnel number now, that we've got?
Sure, we, we need fifty-four on suppression, that's where the, and, and we have fifty-two, um, and we have two more job offers that are out there, that are, that are going, they're, they're going through the process now, um, and I'm hoping that they're gonna be in the door. It, it's probably gonna take six weeks to get them in the door. When we, when we hire them, it, it usually takes, I mean, it could be up to four months to get them to the full staffing level. We're trying to compress it down to, like, they, they have about a month of forty hour, um, a week to kind of just get oriented to the, there's a lot of mandatory training that has to get done before, like, uh, department-specific training, so they can operate safely. And then they'll need another, uh, few weeks, um, and they should be fully staffed. So we have three right now that are not to full staffing, but I expect them to be within the next couple of weeks here.
Will you be coming for another amendment?
I, I, I hope not, I hope not.
We have the money to pay them, though?
Yes.
Thank you. You know, Chief, regardless of which way this sways today, I still want you to bring forward the amendment for the repairs of the fire station. It's like, if we're having to use rainy day funds on that, that is something that's mandatory for the, you know, health and wellness and the safety of our firefighters.
Okay.
Men and women, or even if this doesn't move forward, I wanna make sure that we have something brought forward, that we need to pay for, to make sure to rule the work at the fire stations for your, for the safety of the firefighters.
Okay, thank you.
Council Chair?
Yes.
I don't know the answer to this question, that's why I'm asking it. Is there some kind of emergency situation where you can take funds from the water fund? In, in an emergency, because we're way, way over in our, in our water fund. You know, I mean, we, we got millions and millions of dollars over. I mean, is there something, like, emergency situation where we can declare some emergency, or?
Well, I, I will tell you, it's, it's restricted.
Yeah.
I was, I was just having a conversation with Matt Hall, who's the new speaker in his, in his staff, and, you know, the, the state has money that it's willing to give. We just have to properly request it. Like, we can legit get seven, eight, nine, ten, twenty, fifty million dollars from the state, we just have to put together a program, you know, and then, then you, you're not gonna have these issues.
Yes, can we do that, can we do it quick? I mean, is that something we could put together as a council, or does that come through the administration? Because I, I, some parts of government here are dragging their feet, obviously.
Yeah.
And it's all put on us, because we're the only ones on TV right now, and we're, we're taking heat for everything, but, um, treasure has a hand up. Yeah, you can step up to the podium, please, yep, to the podium.
So to answer your question, Councilman, the city has done this before, okay? They do inter, uh, fund balance loans, okay, where we've borrowed money from the water fund before, but it's contingent upon a plan of paying it back by a certain period with interest, and that's by state law. So the city has done that before, in fact, during twenty, let's see, twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, fourteen, with economic downturn, that was a thing that we did, that was approved. So we borrowed money from whoever had the extra money to spare for that time, but it was only for a few months.
Let me ask, Lance, will the water bills, will the water bills go up at all?
Well, you, you have the money now, but some of that is appropriated, quite frankly, for other projects, so we'd have to see what is appropriated, what's, and what is truly, and I, I don't like the word surplus, but there could be revenue available that could possibly, because again, we've borrowed before, like, two million, you know, different various amounts. It's not the first time, we've borrowed a couple of times when I was a city council member, we did that, so it is an option.
Adam Treasure, can we?
Hold up, one second, I just want to make sure Councilman Wunsel's done here.
Yeah, I just wanna hear everybody else's comments on this, my deal.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can, can you come up with, uh, like, exact number, what's available from the water fund?
I could work with the comptroller and administration, based on appropriations, to see what's available out of that money, that, uh, again, there's like ten million that's invested with Morgan Stanley right now, that is restricted, as you mentioned, from the water fund, as well as what's already in the accounts. So I would need to take a look, and we would need to see where we are in appropriations and expenditures, and we're still obligated.
And who sets the interest rate?
Um, I believe that's done by state law. It's a small percent, but basically, you're borrowing money and you're paying it back with interest, right? So it is costing, it is costing the taxpayers for us to borrow that money.
What is this?
Hmm?
Okay, but it's not gonna increase the water bills?
No, well, it shouldn't, I wouldn't do it otherwise, I would not, if it was gonna do anything to your water bills, I would never think about increasing water bills, it's a bad idea. Okay?
Council, Council Chair, I mean, we're gonna go through all these amendments right now, and we don't have the money to pay it. So either we figure out something, or maybe figure out something from the water balance to borrow, or we're just wasting time, because, I, I mean, yeah, I don't know if I'm gonna table them all for next meeting, see exactly what we have in the water funds, because, I mean, I wanna pay everybody, but I don't have the money. I wanna escalate too, but I don't have the money for the escalate, so, uh, so that's, that's where we stand right now. So we need, we need to figure out something with the administration, whether we, I don't know, e- either we get the money from the water funds, or some, from somewhere else, we need to pay the firefighters, we need to pay the police department, we need to fix the potholes all over the city. I mean, we need to take care of this stuff, but at the same time, we don't have the money. So we're gonna go through this for the next couple of hours, and we don't have the money to, to approve it, because looking at this sheet from the treasurer, we don't have any money by June. So either we pay it right now, and then we don't have salaries the next couple of months for everybody, or we need to figure out something, either from the, you know, water balance, or we need to figure out something, I'm sure. Council Chair? Is this something maybe we could, I mean, I hate to say these two words, study session, that we can go over, go over each one, have the, the directors at the study session, and have the treasurer there, and kind of make, see if we can work something out?
Oh, we did that last time, you just had that meeting.
I mean, I know, but I mean, having them, okay, well, exactly what do you need? I mean, Chief Rogan, you know, maybe you can reduce something here or there, or something. We just did that, I think the next study session should be amongst this council here, and it should talk about, maybe the, the, if we can use money from the water. That's what I mean, yeah. Uh, maybe if the mayor wants to come in, really, the mayor, not the chief of staff, I mean, the mayor, Bill Bazey, the mayor, the city of Dearborn Heights, I'm, I'm not speaking Roger.
The mayor who is here every day, five days a week, the mayor who answers all the citizens', uh, responses, and everything, that mayor.
Point of order, Roger, please. I, I know, you're defending him. If the mayor wants to show up and give us a solution as well, it'd be greatly appreciated. I'm not, I'm not badgering the mayor, Roger, I'm saying if the mayor wants to, please show up.
Sure.
I'm kindly requesting the mayor's presence, to please show up, and let's come up with a solution, because hiding is not the solution.
I don't think hiding is the word, Council Chair, I think you disrespect what you're saying, that, that's why we have a problem, Adam.
Thank you. Council Chair?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, this is why the people elected us, not to say yes or no, but to come up with a plan, make the city run efficiently. I mean, so I think it's our obligation, uh, being elected by the residents, to come up with a solution to this, and not just say no, 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 I understand why everybody's saying no, but to come up with a plan that we can live with. By the way, I wholeheartedly agree, we're saying no right now because we can't afford to do the fund balance funding, that's what we're saying no to. We're not saying no that we don't wanna come up with a plan, and so I want this, I want, like, when you say things like, they elected us to come up with a plan, you're right. Unfortunately, this information has not been given to us until the last meeting, which we did a study session on, and we went to the administration, and we said, administration, figure out some types of cuts, maybe some jobs that you didn't need, come up with certain cuts, to figure things out, because you know who made those decisions, you know who made tough decisions? Mayor Dan Palaco made a tough decision. He came back and said, the city's in a very tough situation right now, you know what he did? He made tough decisions. A true leader during tough times makes tough decisions. And so the truth is, you're right, but is this, is, is it a Band-Aid, or is it more of a hemorrhage to come out and say, we're gonna use water fund money? Because that's, that's also, that's a part-time, so, maybe it's a part-time solution, maybe, maybe our, our fire chief and our police chief are gonna come back and say, you know, we, we've been staffed, you don't need that much money, the money that we usually budget for, take it back and put it in, that would be, that would be the ultimate goal. Well, you can, you, sometimes you have to put a Band-Aid on some before you get to the doctor and have them stitch it up. We've been hemorrhaging, though. I know, but, but you gotta do something, and we can't just leave everything, just say, let's not pay it, like, like I was joking with you, not pay anything anymore. These things are very critical, and tough times call for tough measures. I mean, it's, it's, if we have to do something, we, we, we'll see what the treasurer says, and what, and she meets with the comptroller. Are you agreeing to table these until we hear back from the treasurer? I am, on some of them, um, not, there, there was, yeah, the Parks and Recreation one night, there was an issue I had with that, I mean, I, I think that money was already approved. The, the Parks and Recreation, um, budget amendment, that, that money was already approved by city council. Well, we'll, we'll, we're gonna go through. That's what I'm saying, you said this, that's saying okay with them all, but. So, uh, we have a, we have a motion on the table for the, for the Fire Department right now, yes.
So, I just wanna revert to Councilman Wunsel. So, the problem is, Councilman, just like when you have a credit card, you have a limit. When you try to charge on that credit card, and you're over, when you go over your limit, it declines, right? The only way to make it possible for you to use that credit card is to increase the limit. So what you're referring to, saying, let's see an option, we have an option, if not, we're gonna put in, raise the taxes on the residents, is that what you want?
I'm just coming up with a plan, suggesting something.
Right, right.
You know, and so saying, no, 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 I'm.
Instead of giving relief to the residents, where does bleeding money that we don't have and put it on the back of the residents? Yes, the residents elected us to make tough decisions, but also decisions in the best interest of the residents and city. I know you care so much about DPW, and I think they're a phenomenal group of guys, and I'm not referring to that, and I'm not trying to badge that department, I think those guys do a phenomenal job. The thing is, is that we don't have the money. I wish I can give them ten million dollars, we don't have the money, but the only way to get money is, uh, a couple of options, one is to get a loan, we're gonna pay interest on, and you gotta figure out how you're gonna get it back. Two is, higher taxes on residents, which I'm completely against. Uh, three, unless you pray for a miracle, that, tell me where this money could come from right now, and I won't say no to you. But we, again, when it came to budget season, Councilman, we gave the administration a balanced budget, we trimmed it down, and we actually had a surplus. All these positions that were created, these contracts that went under the rug by mis, uh, being misrepresented to us where the money was coming from, this is what led us. And now you're saying that, well, they made those decisions, but now we're responsible. I agree with you, we're responsible to make the decision, but unfortunately, you're also elected to make tougher decisions.
Guys, I, we have a motion on the table. And come up with ideas too, so, I mean. Yeah, you need to come up with some ideas, and I think you came up with a good one.
Yeah.
You know, instead of going to a bond or something like that.
Something, I mean, let's, let's go aside the envelope here a little bit and think.
In the past, what the, the former treasurer did is inter-fund borrowing, you just, we have a surplus of cash and water, and then the money's paid back, it's, there's interest paid, but it's not interest, not any additional money, it's, the money goes back out of the water fund to the other fund with some, a small amount of interest. So it's, it's just balancing cash flow. Former treasurer would just do it and tell us he was doing it.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this one, and, and really, I think these should all be tabled, I don't wanna deny them, but if Councilwoman Breyer's willing to amend her motion to table this, um.
I really prefer that we make the exception to use the rainy day money for the fire.
Well, yeah, we have to see what we have first before we, that's why I'm saying table it, let's not deny this.
Well, I don't wanna deny it.
Or are you willing to table it? Will you amend your motion to table this?
Yeah.
Refer, refer back to administration, I'm sorry.
Yeah, refer back.
Councilman Constant, do you second that? Yes, motion made by Councilwoman Breyer to refer this back to administration, seconded by Councilman Constant. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. I mean, I, I would like to see that for, I mean, we, we could go through them, but I'm not gonna ask you to re-read all of these, let's just read the, uh, the IT Director Cooper IT budget amendment, just tell me what the amount is on the bottom.
Council Chair?
Councilman Ahmad.
I'd like to make a motion to refer, uh, nine L, which is, uh, to approve the following amendment to the IT Department budget as outlined in nine dash L.
And the amount of two hundred and five thousand.
Two hundred and five thousand.
From the, uh.
Windstream contract life, for the wind, windstream contract increase.
Okay, and this is regarding from the, uh, fund balance?
Correct, coming from the fund balance.
To, to table this?
Correct.
Refer back, refer back to the administration.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion, again, while we're in the discussion here, we're not saying no, we're not denying you, and you're putting your hands up, we, we're trying to figure out where we're gonna get the money. That's what we're doing, we're gonna look at, you know, the fund balance is not the solution. And if the administration feels otherwise, they can, they can put it in writing for us why they feel otherwise, but if they think depleting our rainy day money is the solution, have them tell us that as well. I think Councilman Wunsel brought this idea up, and, you know, we can entertain it. Any other discussion? If there are none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is nine M, ordinance enforcement and animal control for Director Lafive, ordinance budget amendment.
Council Chair?
Councilman?
I'd like to move to refer, uh, nine M back to the administration, uh, budget amendment from Eber Alley, requested thirteen thousand, eight twenty-seven, twenty-nine, and, uh, coming from the fund balance, thirteen thousand, eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Second.
Again, we're not denying anybody, we're saying, for the next meeting, we wanna hear, we wanna see what's happening, and we'll bring it back before us. This is from what?
This was paid by the insurance company, we got a check for twenty-two thousand to pay off this car, and they already paid the money to pay off this car.
Okay. I mean, that's, okay, we can, because.
Why is it coming out of the fund balance?
Yeah, we could do that.
Why is it coming out of the fund balance?
Because the check was put into there, it was twenty-two thousand dollars to pay off this escape, and the escape payoff's like eleven thousand dollars. So there's actually extra money that's sitting in that account.
Okay, see, you gotta remember something, hang on, Mariana, please, what we don't have here is a backup for that, explaining that.
I get that, right?
Yeah. No, but there's no backup information with that, you're writing it in a footnote, which is thank you, but you gotta give us the backup, this is where the check came in, give us the backup so that we see this.
Right.
Pop, just, just give us the proper information, that's all, thank you.
And, uh, can I amend my motion? Uh, Council Chair, I'd like to move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the following amendment to the ordinance budget as outlined in nine M, account number one oh one, four two six, nine eight one, zero zero zero, Capra Alley, requested amount thirteen thousand, eight hundred twenty-seven, twenty-nine, amendment budget thirteen thousand, eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. Account number one oh one, zero. Account number one oh one zero 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 six nine nine zero zero zero. Applied from fund balance, thirteen thousand eight hundred twenty seven dollars and twenty nine cents. Uh, Echo Truck outfitting purchase approved in fiscal year twenty-four, but twenty-five hundred was remaining from the prior year budget that was not added in the current budget and it was paid from, paid for in fiscal twenty fi, fiscal year twenty-five. Motion twenty-five dash zero five one, approved the purchase payoff. Uh, payoff ten thousand nine hundred sixty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents of a twenty twenty-two Ford Escape that was totaled. This money was reimbursed by M M, M M R, M M A in the amount of twenty-two thousand in revenue account. M M R M A, reimbursement G L one oh one zero 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 six seven six nine one one.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Mad, seconded by, uh, Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Thank you for explaining that, Mr. LaFevre. Um, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, the ayes have it, motion carries. Real quickly, uh, treasurer, maybe Councilman, uh, Constant. Were you saying that if we borrowed the money, we would have to pay interest? If, I think Council, Council.
It's called interfund borrowing.
That's correct. It's called an interloan. Um, we've done it before. Okay, the council, I was on council when it was approved. It always is brought before the council from former treasurer Riley, would come from me as well. Asking for your approval. There, it has to be paid back typically within six months or less. So it comes out of your summer tax revenue. You pay it back. Normally we pay it back by September and that is with interest. That is correct. It is low interest, but it's still interest nonetheless.
Has to tell us how much you have to give back with the interest?
I, I believe so. I would need to research that to get that percentage that we're talking about. I've got several notes on, on this discussion of things that I want to do and work with the comptroller and the administration. Um, one to see, you know, one, what we're asking for, we already know from budget amendments, but also take a look. Water fund is most likely the one that we could borrow from and let's take a look what's not appropriate, what truly is available. So you, as an honorable body, knows what's available and I'll get an answer from the state as well.
Thank you. I'm sorry I asked that question. I know, I'm just, I'm thinking about. You have something?
I happened to be in the treasurer's office and did those paperworks when that happened. Okay, and I did look up the council motion from twenty-eleven. And at that time, it was ten point five million, seven came from water. Uh, major a million, local a million and, uh, one point five million from library. It was point two five per. And then between the funds listed below, which I just told you, uh, and the general fund at the maximum loan, um, the maximum loan amounts. And then the intent being all of the above loans shall be repaid by the general fund on or before August thirty-first, twenty-eleven. For Treasurer Riley. That's just for cash flow, right? You still have to find the money. I mean, it's a loan.
That's the thing.
It's a loan.
Which more, we're going to dig or something? Inter, yeah, interfund transfer. Is your, is your, is your, uh, any type of, uh, percentage that we have to pay back with it or no? One, two, five?
Yeah.
Which is nothing, nothing.
That was in two thousand eleven.
But this was in twenty-eleven, so that was thirteen, fourteen years ago. I don't know when it would be now.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, but that kind of gives you an idea. Yes, it has been done and.
Okay, next up we have Parks and Recreation Director Zabanski.
Zabaznik.
It's called Mr. Free. Zabaznik, I gotta say Zabaznik, yeah, Zabaznik, the Magus. Zabaznik, Zabaznik, Zabaznik. Parks and Recreation Director Zabaznik, uh, Parks and Recreation Board Chairman.
Yes, so we have, I mean, we have a playset that was installed, a new playset at, uh, Waddell Park. Um, it was all installed, it's all.
Let us have just a quick, uh, the motion. Let me read the motion before we head to this.
Oh, okay.
Councilor Chair, make the move that Duba Heights City Council approved the following amendment to the DPW.
Oh, yeah, he said DPW highway budget as outlined in nine seven.
That's, yeah, it's a typo.
Yeah, but, yeah, but it says DPW.
Oh, yeah.
Should have said Parks and Recreation. Right?
Yeah.
Parks Recreation Budget.
Councilor Chair, I moved that the Duba Heights City Council approved the following amendment to the Parks and Recreation High, Parks Recreation Budget as outlined in nine dash and uh, account number one oh one six nine one nine eight one zero zero zero, capital outlay. Requested amount eighty-five thousand eight hundred twenty-eight dollars and forty cents. Uh, account number one oh one zero 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 six nine nine zero zero zero. Applied from fund balance eighty-five thousand eight hundred twenty-four and forty cents. Account number one oh one zero 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 six eight four seven hundred. Reimbursed County Parks, requested amount hundred and sixty-three thousand thirty-one dollars and zero cents. Uh, promotions twenty-four dash three twenty-six, twenty-four dash three twenty-seven and twenty-four dash three forty-five.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Mad, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussions?
Councilor Chair, I think the director, I'll speak on a couple of the issues.
Go ahead.
Uh, you know, I guess, um, on my checklist, there's things I'm trying to clear up so I can move forward and, and get past. These are older things that were obviously before I was here. Uh, the first one, uh, was for the, uh, playscapes that were installed at Waddell Park. It was all installed by the company. Um, they, they called me and they asked, why isn't it paid? They did their work. It was satisfactory. Um, so I guess that's kind of where I'm at at this point is, you know, why can't we pay the, the company for what we approved? And, um, we rely heavily on these companies for spare parts for all of our parks, um, for a lot of the playsets. So when I call them, it's like, I'm sorry, you owe us money, so I can't give you the parts to fix your other playscapes. And unfortunately, it isn't items I can buy from Home Depot. Um, and then, of course, the second one is for the wood fiber that was also placed at the, uh, Waddell Park for the surface. So those two items, um, I guess I just have a hard time trying to explain to them why we ordered something and we didn't pay for it. Um, and it was approved, I guess, and I understand the money's been allocated for it, um, and it's just kind of in a holding pattern. Um, and it just kind of affects, obviously, our operation, our credibility with these suppliers as we move ahead and, and try to order new things with them. You know, we'll be on a, like a C O D basis, which isn't always a great place to be. Um, so that's, that's the first part of that. I've been kind of questioning. And the second one, I, I'm concerned with because I have, uh, for the, uh, marquee sign, uh.
Well, that's, we're, we're, we're only on this one right now.
Okay.
This is not the marquee sign.
It's a.
No, it is.
Part of it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm part of it, yeah. Yeah. All right.
Uh, so then on the marquee sign, I'm concerned because Wayne County's calling me. I guess we've extended the grant. Uh, we've extended it for a second time. They're saying, I have to June thirtieth to get this grant processed and this completed. And it seems like we're also like in a holding pattern on that and we stand to, uh, lose the, the grant could be just canceled out by Wayne County. Uh, possibly at this point, then that would just be a, a total loss to us for, uh, I believe it's like sixty-three thousand dollars.
Forty-two thousand dollars.
Forty-two thousand dollars rather. So, uh, just trying to clear it up and get some clarity so I can understand it and, and know, and make sure you know what, you know, what we stand to lose from it. Uh, from not clearing these up and I'm not really sure why.
Councilor Chair. So, so I have a question. So, so eighty-five thousand coming from the fund balance. And what about the other one? Reimbursed County Parks, under sixty-three, so can you, you know anything about it? Uh, I need some help on that one.
Um, correct. So there are two Wayne County Millage grants that we received. One was the forty-four thousand that was from twenty twenty, twenty twenty, sorry, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and we extended it twice for the forty-four thousand that's remaining for Waddell Park. After that, the county moved into a three-year cycle of grant awards, so we received, uh, a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars and that was for the park at the Van Houten Park. So that was part of the play structure that was purchased for that. Um, so the total amount of the appropriation is going to have to be allocated into the budget because we've received the money, it's been approved by council, it just was never budgeted. So we're asking for.
Add up to one sixty-three, that's what you're saying?
Correct. I believe it's one eighteen plus the forty-four.
Yeah, what, what about the other money that was supposed to be allocated? So what happened to the money that was allocated for the other project?
So as we explained in the study session, there was a timing issue because if you see the backup, this purchase items got approved on July fifteenth. Uh, at the time, the fiscal year budget for twenty-three, twenty-four had the money in them. So we approved them with the money in their last fiscal year, but they didn't get paid before the deadline of July, uh, for this year. So it carried on to a new fiscal year where there was no budget at all in the Parks and Recreation Department for capital improvements. So the money went back to the fund balance last year and it was never budgeted for this year. But again, the work had already been approved and implemented by the Parks and Rec Director, so that's why this are coming right now.
Are we, are we able to separate those two? This approved the county reimbursement?
Absolutely. That's why they have specific motions, so you can approve which motion you want to pay and which one you don't. So if you would like to pay just the Camfield portion of it, then you would approve the budget amendment for the sixty-three thousand zero seven five.
Sixty-three thousand with including the controversial, I don't want to go through.
So that is not including the change order. That was what was approved by council per the motion twenty-three, three, four, five. There is a change order of seven thousand dollars that is not included in this budget amendment request.
Look, can you, Councilor Chair? Yeah, one second. Let Councilman, let him finish first. You all say here?
I'm good, I'm good.
Can you confirm that motion for me? Get the amount on that. Go ahead.
Twenty-four, three, four, five. It's in the backup. Yeah.
Go ahead, Councilman Saab.
Um, for the sign, I'm reading the motion. And a former director stood up there and said, I have extra money in my budget and I'm moving around for the sign. And you can watch that meeting, it's on YouTube, bluntly lied. And said, I have this money on the side and now we're looking, I'm looking at that motion. Nowhere on here does it say a budget, a line item, a GL account, or it's coming from fund balance.
In the, in the motion itself from back in July?
July twenty-fourth.
Um, so it says specifically, to award the bid for the Camfield Center Central Park marquee sign to Lead Lion in the amount of sixty-three thousand zero seven five. Funds for this project are from the Wayne County Park Millage, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of forty-four thousand six hundred and twenty-four. With the balance to be paid out of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five recreation budget. In addition, authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign the contract for the installation and the comptroller and treasurer to issue payment as outlined in seven A. Um, so yeah, what she put in there was from the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five recreation budget. It wasn't specified where it was coming from. That's why the budget amendment is requesting that extra amount to come from the appropriation from fund balance.
Councilor Chair. Ah. You all say here, Councilman, uh, Saab?
Um, Councilman Constant, thank you for voting no on that one too.
Thank you. All right, guys, right here.
Thank you.
Keep it here in business, please. Are you all done here?
I'm all set.
Councilman Munson.
Um, I'm not sure, but I, I, the, the Waddell Park, because that's, that's in my neighborhood. Um, I remember it came before us, uh, claims to pay it and there was some kind of problem uh, with the, the way the bill was presented to the comptroller. And there was an issue with that. Was there, is, I mean, is can Shannon speak on that? I mean, because I think it did cover, there was an issue with it. Something happened with it. Because I know it came before us to have this part of the money allocated for this.
I, I don't recall if there was any issues. I just know it's not budgeted, so that's why we're requesting the budget amendment.
Yeah. Well, we approved it though, right?
Correct. The purchase, again, it was approved last fiscal year, so that's where the issue is, right? It was approved last fiscal year when there was money remaining in the budget. It was never allocated for this year's budget.
Yeah, thank you. Councilor Chair, you know, I, I said this before at a meeting that the money that's left over from one year's budget to another, we should keep track of that. I mean, even, no matter, you, you can spend it wherever you want, but say, hey, we got, you know, ten thousand dollars from the parks, we didn't spend it. Okay, it's to have a little category and what, what did we do with that money? Because it just goes in, it just goes in the general fund and then they just spend whatever, that, that money was already approved for that specific department or project.
I got a question. You got a question? Man, you're, you, you get my brain triggered, I swear you do. You do a good job at it. What, we haven't used any of the money from our emergency manager position. And that money at the end of the year is going to get pushed over to the fund balance or to the general ledger like it does every year because we don't have an emergency manager. So the remaining balance, since we're not paying an emergency manager, can you tell me how much is still in that line item? And what we can use, and can we transfer so that we can use it? Why don't we start looking at things like they were not using like that?
So with regards to the police department.
It's not the police department, that's emergency manager.
It's still managed by the police chief, so I give the police chief the authority to manage the budget as he sees fit. Given the overtime expenses, I'm assuming that that money is going to end up going to try to balance.
No, 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 this is, no, no, timeout, timeout. We split it in the last year's budget, okay? And maybe not, we split it. And we also passed a resolution.
Correct.
Hang on, let me, just give me a second, please. We passed a resolution so that the administration, including the police chief and the mayor and Roger, you, everybody else cannot use additional, you cannot move things from different line items. So you can't take what the emergency manager is making and say, oh, we're just going to use it for overtime. Or, you know, we're going to take for emergency manager, we're just going to give it to the chief of staff like that. Those, that's not allowed.
Correct. Again, given the situation today of the overtime not being approved. I'm assuming the director responsible for the emergency management is going to have to come back and look at those extra numbers and see where he can grab some money to try to cover that. He would still have to come back to you, but it's still his budget, so.
Okay, but, you know, it's the city's budget.
Yeah.
Taxpayers.
Correct.
So, but that money's still available because we're, we're not paying an emergency manager, correct?
At the moment, no, we've only paid for, I believe, half of the year for an emergency manager.
Yeah, yeah, not even half the year.
Yeah.
Um, so, why don't we take that money? Since we're not using it, and so it's, so kind of like what Councilman Winslow said, don't put it back in the general fund. Let's take that money, boom, let's take, let's, let's at least take care of what we have to pay on this. And that's only twenty-five thousand because forty-four thousand of it is coming. See how we resolve things together?
Yeah, you can do that, absolutely.
Table this, get us that number, how much is in there? Because we know we're not going to use it for the rest of the year. I mean, is the mayor planning on putting an emergency manager? God forbid, if an emergency does happen, we are not staffing them.
So the, the acting emergency manager is Bob Ankrab, so I don't know if his salary was being charged to the, to the emergency manager area.
No, he was not. He was, he was a part-time position in which we approved his budget for him on.
Again, he's currently the acting emergency manager.
I didn't know that.
Correct. I, I told you that, I will file back when you guys asked me.
But I thought he resigned from that position.
Correct. And in the lack of an emergency manager, we need somebody to file the reports that are required for that and Mr. Ankrab has been filling that position. So I, I would just have to double check how much is remaining and if it's coming out of there or if it's coming out of the communications.
That's me and I asked if we had an emergency manager and they said no.
I said the acting one was Bob Ankrab. You can look at the minutes.
Okay, right, right now, you, you know what? Let's forget the emergency manager position. Any position, like we're trying, I don't want, I don't want it to be just like a back, back and forth. There is money.
The G I S coordinator is free, so that hasn't been budgeted at all or used by the emergent, uh, the G I S coordinator. So that's a position that it was in the building and engineering department. It was approved, that hasn't been filled. So that's an area that you could take.
It's amazing. You know, we also approved for, we also, I mean, I don't know if we're going to have the enough time to the other two positions that Councilman Winslow has for.
Guys will bring that up too.
You know, let's, let's take that money, let's move some money around, like they're just, it's getting in accounts. And let's move it around. That's how you move money around. Instead of saying we're going to take rainy day funding and then this, all this extra money that we, we budgeted for that we didn't use, we're going to go in the general fund. Timeout. We are going to do a study session on this. Because there's money in that budget. And you know what we're going to do? We're going to go through this entire budget of things that we have not spent any money from and we're going to take it out and we're going to help support every single budget item. That's what we're going to do.
It would be great if you could prioritize which departments you want to, to focus on the most so that we can.
I think, we, we want to, we want to find the one point seven million dollars. That's what we want to do. Every single department is prioritized to us, including IT, including, uh, fire. I, I mean, definitely DPW or police, Parks and Recs. The mon, there's one point seven million dollars in the budget that's not being used right now and I can promise you, we can find it from just two, two positions. And, uh, the, 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 the ordis officers that we did not fill the vacancy for, which is coming up to July. And that's what we're going to do. We're going to rebudget for three, for three additional, two additional spots, because we're going to do that. Or we're going to finish this year with that money and it's just going to go in the general fund and we're going to, it's going to be spent. Instead, let's pick it around. You like that? Unless unless you already spent the money.
Again, I think that the current budget amendments show our projections of what is going to be overspent. There are certain budgets, as we explained in the study session, that have already been overspent, including the overtime department. So again, whether or not you approve those budget amendments, those areas have already been over budgeted. The treasurer, I mean, the comptroller had already given you those numbers. So yes, there's a few positions here and there that aren't filled. It is not sufficient. That is why these budget amendments are in front of you. It is not sufficient. That is why this budget amendments are in front of you.
So if you're telling me right now, we likely hired like you guys were supposed to, two ordinance officers right now. We don't have the money for them. But we budgeted for them.
Again, the money is still there for that particular general ledger item, right? However,
It's not real.
We are forecasting other expenses that are going to require that money.
But you can't use it without coming to it.
Correct.
But so you, you're going to show me right now on the record. You guys have not spent the money right now. So if we request it, it's there.
Again, you have not spent the money in certain general ledger items. The ones that you have overspent are the ones that are in front of you right now.
We didn't overspend.
That are overspent. Sorry. I didn't mean to say you, that, that are overspent in general are the ones that are in front of you. And in my opinion, they exceed what is not overspent.
I also do apologize. I don't want you to think like I'm really, my brain is just firing off right now on finding ways of well, great, if we budgeted for something and the money's there, we're not using it, let's give it to the park recreation department. Let's give it to the fire department. Start using the water fund, start of using, so now it looks like we need to go back. And I'm going to do some homework this week. Things that we approved, then I'm going to go back to those budgets. I'm going to see things that we didn't approve, how to break it up and how to get that money back. That's, that's going to be the solution.
Okay.
Council Chair, we have to ask. Okay, Council Chair?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
We're going to have to ask, you know, all the directors, you know, we're, maybe they didn't spend all their office supply money. Or, you know, the, all the things that they were budgeted for, that they, they exhausted that fund.
Council Chair, you have a motion on the table.
Okay, we got a motion on the table. I think we're going to find the money. I think there's one point, I believe there's one point seven million dollars. If the, if the administration didn't move around money like they're not supposed to, then I think there's close to two million dollars that we can find.
Should be in there.
Yeah. Council Chair? Yes, sir.
And we can check with our county commissioner, David Kenezak, and our state representative also, the grant money is available.
Yes, and, and I'm, yeah, we should have a grant writer and a lobbyist, but it's here nor there. Um, can you, uh, can we table this, refer this back to the administration? God bless you. I made my motion to refer it back to the administration nine, one. Thank you. And Councilwoman Brier, can you second it?
Sure.
Everybody okay with that? Refer it back to the administration?
Council Chair?
Yes, sir.
Um, Director, I mean, is this something that can wait? I mean, I know you're these, these people aren't paid and you, you say it's a problem. You think another couple of weeks would be an issue?
Two weeks. I, I don't think two weeks would, they, they waited, but at least we would be moving in a direction and I could give them at least some answer that we're waiting on it.
I think we're going to find the money. I, I'm actually like very optimistic. Thank you. All in favor, please state aye. Those opposed? The eyes have it, motion carries. Unless we're planning on using that money for other things that like, we're just not being told. I think that there's money there.
There has to be.
There has to be. Next up, we have you know, there's, there's quite a few things here. Some of the council members are fasting, is that right? Some of the council members, if we take a quick five-minute break, whether to drink some water. I mean, nothing from the audience. I, I want to get, you know, and everybody who's passing, they want to get their break real quick. Is that okay? All right, let's, can we do, let them quick, can we take a quick five-minute recess? Unless you drink some water. And we'll, we'll jump back into it. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
How do he get sneakers in his face? Oh my God, who made that? My mother-in-law took half of it. Their birthday, nothing, you know what they call? You gotta be a tech here. You know what? We're not eating, we're short. You gotta get a second pack. I'll work some more time out. Oh, really? You're the one. I know you always said, I gotta go. I drive there and back and forth with. Yeah, yeah. He started that. The small room. You should call the former director, Ken Grable. Understanding that you worked on that. He's in, uh, comedian life. Yeah, I, I always think it's, I think, I thought that somebody hold their employees. Yeah, and, and, you know, that was, um, a lot like with the marquee and stuff that tug back and forth, you know? That was too expensive of a, of a, uh, either, the, the, Richard A. Young's sense, which I used to go through. That's really underutilized and it got, and, and there's never any staff there, you know, it's a sauna. And it was just rogue forever. And it was just, and then same thing with the local. We got to get some adequate staff and then we got all that in the works. It, it, it might be at the beginning of the summer, so we can do, uh, you know, ten hours off and coming. I promise you, we need a little more hours. I took it off for some of their closure. That was so the former building director, Mike Enner, could have Sunday and Monday off. But it, it should be open, but it's just. Thinking on hiring. No, and it's, it's a challenge.
I know. We are constantly putting out flyers. People come in, people, people not showing up. It is crap.
Lot of, lot of police officers, children, or someone, or somebody in accounting, their daughter. See, your budget, yeah, and they're served to everybody. The city is broke, but John Dancy wants a three thousand dollar door. But it's a, it's a life. My yours is, uh, it's coming, yeah, it's coming from the part-time. Right now? Um, George, it's still on.
The sound's good.
Yeah, but every day, everybody's listening. Really, the rest of the pilots. Feel comfortable because I miss them, because I don't see them every day. But when I see you, I just think, because I, you sound like them, and I'm going to say a lot of those ways. All right.
Recording in progress.
Thank you to all those that were allowing for that quick break. Yep, I'm on.
Council.
Thank you for that quick break. Next up is nine O.
Council Chair?
Yep, the Councilman, Saab.
Um, well, nine O is, uh, acting chief, uh, Hadar, police department budget amendment. Recommended motions that the Dubois City Council approve the following budget. Following amendment to the police department clothing count, one oh one, three hundred, seven one three dot zero 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 as follows. Transfer thirty-five thousand from repair and maintenance, one oh one, three hundred, nine thirty-two, zero 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 to clothing account, one oh one, three hundred, seven one three, zero 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 as outlined in nine. Oh, support.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Um, I just want to make a clarifying, congratulate him. It's no longer acting chief, it's current chief. Uh, uh, Hadar. He was sworn in today. Congratulations to Mr. Hadar, the chief Hadar. Um, any discussion on this?
Council Chair, this is just only, uh, transferring money uh, from one account to the other, so.
Yep, I see that. Seeing no other discussion, all in favor, please state aye. Those opposed? The eyes have it, motion carries. Next up is nine E, acting chief of police Hadar, police department overtime budget amendment.
Council Chair? Move that, I move to refer this back um, to, uh, refer back to the administration that the Dubois, uh, Dubois City Council refer back the following amend, amendment to the police department overtime budget as outlined in nine E. Um, account number.
You don't have to go through all that.
Yeah.
Cause we're going to refer back to this, to the administration for the next meeting and hopefully we can come together to find a resolution to find that money. Support. And this is for the overtime. Again, this is not us saying no, we're saying hope for the solution with the administration.
Yeah, we understand.
Look at the other budget. So we're referring this back to administration. You got that? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The eyes have it, motion carries. Next up is treasurer explained, treasurer office budget amendment.
Council Chair?
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dubois City Council approved the following amendment to the treasurer's office budget as outlined in nine dash Q. Account name over, uh, account number one oh one, two five, three, seven oh nine, zero zero zero. Account name overtime, current budget one thousand. Requested amount three thousand. amended budget would be four thousand. Uh, account number one oh one, two five, three, nine eight one, zero zero zero, Capra Awle. Current budget is zero. requested amount is twenty-five ninety. amended budget would be twenty-five ninety. Account number one oh one, two five, three, seven zero seven, one hundred. Account name part-time. Current budget is fifteen thousand. Uh, requested amount to be transferred from the part-time would be fifty-five ninety. amended budget to the part-time would be ninety-four, ten.
Um, it's just a complete wash, yes.
Just transfer.
Transfer from part-time to overtime.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Brier. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The eyes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have WDHT Director Cooper, WDHT budget amendment.
Council Chair?
Councilman?
I moved that the Dubois City Council approved the following amendment to the WDHT budget as the outline in nine dash R. Account number one oh one, eight oh nine, nine eight one, zero 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 one. Account name PEC capital improvement, current budget five thousand, requested amount ten thousand. Amendment budget would be fifteen thousand. Uh, account number one oh one, zero zero zero, six nine nine, zero one one. Appropriation from the PEC fund balance, requested amount is ten thousand.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Here you can see the money's coming from the PEG account, not coming from the fund balance. I'm, I'm okay with this if everybody else is. Um, any other discussion? Council Chair?
Yep.
Councilman?
Um, I know it's coming from the, uh, the account, um, the PEG fund. Uh, what, what is this for? Cause I noticed the PEG funds restricted on what you.
Equipment.
Equipment. It's equipment, sir.
What kind?
What's it? Oh, for one, this. So this can, this can get repaired. We're looking at some more, uh, cameras, um, for the department. Cameras are pretty expensive. One of the things, you know, just let you know that we're, we're looking at doing is integrating, um, uh, a drone use. Uh, so we can take some, uh, aerial photos and videos of some of the events and part of that, we have to get, um, uh, our, our department licensed to be able to drive them.
Is this for like more photo ops or is this for like, uh, like actual?
We want to take like the, the Christmas tree lighting when we have the festival to be able to get some, some good pictures and videos.
I like that.
And everything. So we're, we're, we're trying to get ahead with it.
Who will operate it?
Yeah, that's, we've got to get the training for that and everything. We'll, we'll get both of our, our members trained. And licensed. Council Chair?
Yep.
That, that's almost like a luxury item there. And what, what, how much do we have left in our PEG fund?
Seven hundred, eight hundred, thousand, maybe, maybe a million.
Um, yeah, it's, it's close to like a million.
And it's restricted. So I mean, we're using it. No.
No, that one you can't, sir.
That one the state will come down on. Uh, any other discussion? You guys making a lot of noise with those rappers out there. No, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The eyes have it, motion carries. Next, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Council Chairman Beidun, extension of the temporary food use license specific locations resolution. Bless you, bless you.
Council Chair?
Councilman?
I moved that the Dubois City Council further extend amended uh, resolution regarding city council approval process for temporary food uses and licenses at specific locations for an additional one hundred and eighty days as outlined in eleven A.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilwoman Brier. Any discussion?
Council Chair?
Yep, Councilman.
Well, what, what does this mean? Does it mean that we're, the, the current licenses are being extended a hundred and eighty days or the process that we're using is changing or?
No, I knew this was going to get brought up. I kind of felt like you were going to say it too. So I'm going to tell you how this works. Councilman Ahmad brought this resolution before he left. Where they were.
Council Abdullah.
I mean, I mean, Councilman Abdullah. Former Council Chairman Abdullah, Dave Abdullah. The administration was working on it. I think this from like Black Coast time. And before I was on city council, I asked for him to put something like this forward because I had a, had, had a food, not a food truck, I had a trailer. And I used to sell hot dogs out of it. And one day I got a ticket. And I was, I got, you know, I, I got a ticket, gave it to an attorney. The attorney said, this is the wrong ordinance. So the ticket was dismissed. And I continued to operate without the having anything there. The city still doesn't have anything there. But people were not able to collect or be able to enforce any of these laws, like making sure that there's, they're doing background checks, they're making sure that their electric is being done properly, they're making sure that they have a health department license. Making sure that their, their food trucks are insured. There's nothing there by the city right now. So this is just simply saying we're making sure that our agreement is that they have to have all of these or they can't open up. And so we're just renewing our vows basically.
Council Chair?
Yeah.
Uh, for the record, we did get a food ordinance, food truck ordinance passed by the planning commission. Um, it's sixteen page. It's, it's thorough. It covers the insurance, health department, zoning, all issues. It went through three, uh, presentations. If you want it to be revisited and bring back to the planning commission, please let me know. But, um, they did pass it initially if you want it back, other than six months.
That's, that's fair back in the, I, I think what happened was we were going back and forth on the distance that, that you can have a food truck or not. And I think some, you know, we said we're going to only have X amount in the north end, X amount in the south end, or there was only so much that you can have in certain areas. We were hoping that the administration said they were going to work on a centralized location. Um, we're using different ideas. You remember, you and I spoke about it. We were looking at like Garden City and, uh, like Novi, you said you were looking at their, uh, licensing as well. So, yeah, maybe you can bring it back and I think ultimately we can stamp this into our books.
What was amended in that resolution?
How many we wanted.
Yeah.
How many we wanted, how many food trucks were allowed? I think we're all kind of in a little bit of a disagreement. And.
Is it, is it highlighted or anything in this?
No, this is, this is not, this is right here is just say we're renewing our vows.
This, this resolution that's in the backup. Is this the one we're going with or is? is this the one we're going with or is it the old one?
This is the, this is the one hundred and eighty day regular one.
Correct.
It, it's just continuing the, basically saying, you read it, that you have to have the health department, you have to have a background check to make sure that you don't have like, uh, you know, no child abuse or, you know, you're being on, on Lotus or any type of like sexual assault and things like that to be able to work in the city. But I mean, it's still a thorough background you have to do to be able to open one in Dubois Heights.
So this one in, in, in our backup is the
Original.
That's original.
It's the original. It's not the new one that the administration has brought forward. This is the one Dave Abdullah brought uh, a few years back that we're just basically doing.
So where is the amended one?
Hasn't been brought forward back. We, we, we tabled it and nothing was brought forward back.
So we're approving the re- amended one, but we don't know what it is?
No, we're approving the original, the original temporary food truck license, what you're voting on.
Further extend the amended resolution regarding city approved.
Th- this is the amended because you're extending it for another hundred and eighty days.
That's why I asked, that's what I was.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's a hundred and eighty days of amending it because you're going for an additional hundred and eighty days.
Okay.
You're not using the amended one that the administration brought.
Okay, alright, good.
You read it, it's the same one that you do every hundred and eighty days.
I'm looking for any differences in there.
Yeah.
Was it, okay.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Councilman Abdullah. Next up is temporary food truck license renewal applications for solid oak eatery.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Saab, you were quick to get that.
I moved, I love this place. Um, I moved that the Dubois City Council approved the temporary food truck ta- cart license renewal application for solid oak eatery as outlined in thirteen A. Second.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Brier. Any discussion?
Counselor Chair.
Yes, sir.
I visited the site. Like I'm trying to do it all the time on our license renewals. Um, the, the, the food trailer is immaculate. I mean, it's spotless. It's, 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 it's like unreal how, how clean it is, just like the, the, uh, store itself. I mean, the, the, those two people, Nicole and Ali, they are like, I'm there on the ball with this.
Well, that's what your favorite thing from there, when I'm so fast, then I'm hungry, so I, I don't want you to time it in the chili keys.
Oh, no, spicy, the hot's.
Hot sauce. I like the soup.
Yeah. But, uh, yeah.
I like his soup, it's good.
Yep. I, I checked it out and met my approval, if that means anything.
Yes, yes, you're doing a great job, Councilor, giving the resident. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, business license renewal for Uncle Ray's Place.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dubois City Council approved the business license renewal for Uncle Ray's Place at two four five zero two one as outlined in thirteen B. Support.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? I will just say I have nothing against used car dealers or any used car lots or anything like that, but Uncle Ray's Place on Warren and Telegraph is the, is the neatest, I won't say the cleanest, but the neatest, most organized shop I have ever seen. No matter what time of the day, as soon as they close, there's not a car out in the parking lot.
That's a restaurant.
This is the restaurant.
Oh, oh, I'm shaking them.
Yeah, no, no.
No, it's pretty good.
I'm sorry, I'm thinking of Warren Telegraph. What's the, what's the muffler shop thing called? Is it Ray's?
Ray's, and then it's closed.
It's closed.
They closed?
Yeah.
No.
Largely bottom, I think.
Speedy mufflers.
It is.
Awesome job.
Well, after, I mean technically it's a restaurant, after they're closed, everybody leaves the parking lot. So. Alright. Counselor Chair.
That's why we're talking about the clean shop.
I'm sorry.
Excuse him.
Yeah, I need, I need tea. I need coffee. Counsel, Counselor Chair.
Let's get done so he can get food.
Councilman Wansel, go ahead.
Um, again, I, I, I visited this establishment and, uh, the owners recently added a, a large kitchen to their facility and it's, it's all state-of-the-art equipment. He showed me around, everything is back there. Um, the, the tables inside the, the lounge area are kept really clean and the bar looked really neat. Once again, this meets my approval, the license renewal.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Yes.
Do they still have fish and chips?
Yes.
Alright, I'm happy Friday.
Do they?
Mm-hmm.
See, it's good you don't know about this place.
It's Friday.
We have it today. Alright, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I see Lou out here laughing. Lou, Lou, I swear, Lou. I'm glad we got some laughs out of Lou today. Alright, motion carries. Next up, we have, uh, permanent traffic control device, uh, handicap sign on Powers.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dubois City Council approved the placement of a handicap parking sign at twenty-one, three zero two Powers as outlined in thirteen C.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion?
Counselor Chair, I, I mean, I, I've been, I've been, um, asked for a couple of times for my residents that need a handicap parking in front of their house because other people park in front of it. I mean, is, is this, is this a, a business this is going in?
No, we can pay staff.
Yeah, we're just saying.
Backup television.
I know, but we're, we're just saying that.
The.
He had the doctor's meeting.
Yeah.
The guy has no parking.
The guy has no parking.
driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what he's, yeah. That's why I'm, yeah, I, because I've had a, a resident reach out to me that has.
Ever reach out to the administration, the administration will?
Well, he has, he has.
Hey, what happened?
Nothing.
Is that the guy across from Minneapolis?
Yeah.
Going Clifford.
Yep.
Yeah.
He needs a handicap van that pulls up in front of his house, so he can get wheelchair accessible.
Why don't you put an email to, to the administration, see, see me on there to watch and look, not looking into it.
Alright, alright, thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have Council members.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I just want to wish everybody that's celebrating, uh, Ramadan and Eid Mubarak this coming weekend.
Sunday, hey, you can't wait for this to be done.
That's it from me.
You got a couple more days.
Oh, that was fast.
Counselor Chair.
Yep, um, just to echo whatever Councilman Saab said, Eid Mubarak to everybody observing and, uh, happy, uh, Mar- Women's Month for everybody. Thank you, Counselor Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Constance.
I want to wish everyone to a, uh, peaceful Ramadan and Eid Mubarak and end of Lent and Happy Easter and today is Greek Independence Day. Today, Greece, uh, obtained their independence.
Yeah, three and a half weeks.
Happy Greek Independence Day.
Yeah, did you guys get that?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Are you next, Councilwoman Brier?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
Uh.
Guys, point of order, let's.
The card last gathering last Tuesday. Uh, I learned about public works, uh, water bills, more details here. Uh, thank you, Mariana. Uh, the rate per unit, the water billing is broke down, forty-nine percent goes to GLWA for the purchase of water and sewer, eighteen percent is admin, fifteen percent is system maintenance, eleven percent is capital improvement. So that's a little bit of help. And today I got this lovely breakdown, which shows what people don't understand about their water bill. And essentially, in most cases, the people don't read the actual and the estimated portions and most bills that they're complaining about are more than two months. And what they don't understand is we had, uh, I believe bonding in both twenty, oh, let's see if I can get this right. I learned today that we bonded something in like twenty twelve and then again in twenty nineteen and we're still paying on it and it's in our water bill. And it's a thirty year. So that's a bad thing that people don't understand that's also included in our water bill. And then when we have all these water main breaks, uh, that excessive flow, we all pay for it. So I just thought I'd bring that forward so people understand a little bit better.
Thank you. Anything else, Councilwoman?
Uh, I'm ready for announcements.
Well, that's, okay, that's, we're gonna finish that up. Any other council members?
Counselor Chair.
Councilman, uh, Wansel.
Couple of things, um, we're talking about raising some extra money. I, I got a communication from a resident and he's always coming up with stuff, you know, out of the, out of the box. And he, he asked me a question. He said, you know, what, what are we doing with the, uh, the water meters that get replaced? They're heavy and they can, you, it can be scrapped. And who's getting the money for the scrapping of these water meters? I mean, there's gonna be thousands and thousands of them. I mean, that could be, that could be a lot of money. I, I didn't see anything in the contract about scrapping. Who gets, who gets the money for scrapping? They are heavy, they're, they're solid, they're all steel too, or I think they're steel. I don't think they're, I don't think they're aluminum. Cast iron, that's probably cast iron.
So right now, all those water meters are brass water meters. Um, we could ask if Ali's still on here, if there is a, uh, is written into the contract. Right now, they're all being stored at the DPW, so the individuals are going out from the contractor, bringing the old ones back, documenting them all, taking part of them, partially disassembling them so that we can either scrap or sell the old meters. And then the actual plastic heads are a little bit different. They're really not worth a whole lot. They must, they might just be garbage. Um, right now, they're all stored, they're coming back to the DPW in bins, so. I don't know if there's a plan, if it was in the contract documents. We have a, uh, every two weeks, the engineering team and the Ferguson and Vepo team meet to discuss the progress of this particular program. And, uh, we haven't gotten to that point yet, but they're all being stored at the DPW right now, so. There's five shipping containers on site and a couple of large steel bins we put together, so.
Well, that could be, uh, that's brass, it's even more expensive probably for scrapping.
Yeah, there'll, there'll have to be a lot of details worked out with it, but I mean, our, our goal is to find a way to, uh.
Let me get Mr. Ivan, go ahead.
Salvage some of the material.
Thank you, uh, Jack. Director.
Hey, guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, um, uh, just for the records, uh, it's always part, it was always part of the project, the, uh, the meters, the old meters belong to the city. So they are, uh, accurately being stored and they're accounted for. And then once we finish the project, we're still in area number one, uh, we're storing them for two reasons, for record keeping. So if we have to verify the final read of any meter, they're always there. And then once the project is complete, absolutely, we will be selling them either to, uh, communities that need, uh, spare or sell them as salvage. But yes, that's always been part of the project.
Good, some money there.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
They are valuable, very valuable.
Brass, that's like, that's.
Yes, sir.
Some sounds like copper, maybe more than copper.
Yeah, and then you can get more money if you sell them to an older communities to use them as a spare, so. Do you?
Get money in.
Okay.
Thank you, okay.
Yep.
Um, couple more things, um, Saturday, May seventeenth is our thirty-second annual Rain Garden Decourse Creek Cleanup at the Richard A. Young Center.
What day is that?
Saturday, May seventeenth. The Washington Stewart Commission is hosting the annual Rain Garden Decourse Creek Cleanup Project. Starts at nine AM. I'll be posting it on, uh, city, city's website and then on my own Facebook page. And, um, we'll also be having our second annual Family Fun Night at Annapolis High School. Last year, we had over five hundred participants and this is a completely free event, all the food, games, prizes, everything are free to the public. And that'll be on, um, May tenth, the mother, the day before Mother's Day, and we'll be having special Mother's Day projects that the kids can make for their mothers at night. And, uh, hope to see everyone there. More details will come on that. And, uh, like I requested earlier, uh, I'd have the ordinance director give us a, a, a brief, uh, update on the Pelham, uh, Trailer Park, what, what went down the last week.
We were in court last week and of course, uh, they got a new attorney, so we have to wait and adjourn it another week and a half so we can get caught up. But we went out there today with the Eagle Company, they're like an EPA, uh, testing the, well, not testing, but checking their sewer links and all their hookups. Um, we went trailer to trailer, we went out there for three hours today. Um, she was not impressed at all and I think she's gonna cite them, turn it over to Laura and probably pull their business license as well. Um, we're waiting for her report, it'll probably take two, three days to get that. But, um, yeah, they were not impressed at all. They actually had someone from the DNR out there today with us as well, from their environmental group.
I would add, Counselor Chair. Yeah, so. Last week, you, weren't you out there with the building department?
You speak kind of, because I know you represented it.
Yeah, we were out there and like I said, uh, we condemned trailers then, uh, when we were in court last week, we got, uh, court ordered to do inspections. I believe they inspected approximately sixteen trailers that people were home and, uh, they all failed pretty much. Um, I think they may have tagged one or two more as, uh, condemned. But like I said, I think, uh, the Eagle, EPA is gonna be their, hopefully their big key to this because with the waste going onto the ground, uh, like I said, she was not impressed at all. And she was, uh, very upset. She went trailer to trailer, so she checked them all out.
Yeah, um, yeah, I know that some of them trailers were in bad shape, but I know there were some that were in pretty good shape too, right?
Not many. There's some that are savable, but most I would say if we even get in the rest of them, they probably won't pass inspections and even if they do pa- we do do inspections on them, they won't be able to bring them up to code.
No, um, the, what, my main concern, I, I voiced it to you and several people, is that if, if they are condemned, what's the process? Are the people evicted from them? And if so, where are they gonna go? And I, I brought up the fact that I was contacting the Red Cross and Roger through the administration, through Roger, stated that they already had something in place for.
Well, in the court order we got from the judge, uh, last week, I believe, and he even put in there that anybody is displaced, um, will have to be on the cost of the trailer park itself. Um, like I said, but we're still working. Like I said, I think once we get the report back from Eagle, um, that'll be a big step for us. We go back to court, um, especially if they close them down and they get Laura involved.
Okay, so you're working on some kind of, uh, some kind of fund that the owner would have to put up, the?
Well, that's gonna be up to the judge. It'll be a bond the judge puts on it. The judge didn't want to do anything ahead of himself because then they're gonna put a stay and everything and we, we want to start over, get a three-month extension and everything. That's why the judge says, let's just get out there, do the inspections. Like I said, we have another court date, I believe in two weeks, um, to go back with a new attorney. Um, so hopefully we'll have the report from Eagle and hopefully Laura will get involved by then, have their report and, you know, go from there.
Great, we're gonna stay on top of this for sure, sure. The great thing is done.
Let Roger speak on it a little bit too, because I know he was representing the city, me and you are in the courtroom. If you want to just add a few things, Roger.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Chair. Um, there were sixteen trailers that were condemned, but these trailers are, some are, are back from nineteen sixty-nine. Um, there's a tremendous amount that is severely old, but when Eagle came on today, it, it was, it was like a bulldog going after them, especially for the sewage that's dumped into the ground, the, the threats of E. coli going into our water system. It's a severe issue that's been been, uh, malignant and lingering in the city since two thou- at least two thousand and four. So I think right now, um, we did talk with, uh, Wayne Metro to, um, look at, uh, emergency shelter options and supportive services for the families. Uh, we've contacted through, um, uh, CDBG, uh, director, um, grants that are available through HUD to assist with relocations, but these trailers are in bad shape. You have actually doors that are, um, bolted shut, iron doors bolted shut, people cannot get out. So with the judge, we had asked initially for a two hundred thousand dollar bond, we're gonna ask for more to cover the costs, uh, from these people, but if they sell that park, um, we're gonna have to look at the cleaning up the sewers and all the lack of uh, infrastructure work that's been in that location for so long. So we're looking at everything there. We have a court date, I think April ninth. Um, but again, this is the fifth law firm that came in to represent them in the last two and a, two and a half years I've been involved. two and a, two and a half years I've been involved. Um, and we, they had over seven, they fired their, their managers today, I guess they didn't like the court, uh, um, so they've had about eight managers last year. Um, this Eagle, uh, representative is one who actually tackled the Ipsilanti, um, trailer park problem, and I know we, we, we asked him to look at the E-force, and I think this owner had actually hands-on in those as well. Um, but I like that Lara's getting involved and that's licensing issues, and I think that how we will have a report. We did enter into the record, all six pages of the evaluations on every one of those trailers. So that's evidence that's marked against the trailer park as well. This is the first time we've gotten that far with this group.
And I, I wanna say, if that's okay, Councilman Wenzel, I, I was in the hearing with the, with Roger, I listened to what our judges were saying and, y- you know, I, I believe Roger was requesting for a bond to be held against them, that we can get money from the owners who are out in New Jersey. Our judge also granted Eagle and inspections to be done, uh, which, you know, actually could've even went against his own will, but he said, we're gonna do it because enough's enough. And he, the judge himself said, I went and I visited the site before ruling on this hearing today. Our, 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 our judges in Dearborn Heights said, I knew this was coming before me, I wanted to see it with my own two eyes. Uh, it was a good hearing. Councilman Wenzel was also in presence with us today. Thank you. Bless you.
Okay, yeah, one, one, one more thing, the, uh, the five thousand dollar check that was asked to be approved, we talked about that, is that, is that an issue now, or?
I mean, so, you want me to talk about it, or do you wanna talk about it?
Yeah, I mean-
There's an email.
Yeah, yeah, you wanna talk about it?
Okay, well, I'll say, I got a phone call, well, I got a text from Councilman Wenzel, who was at a, uh, hearing, or not in a hearing, for swearing and ceremony for one of the new firefighters, congratulations to the new firefighter that started with us. Um, and he told me that he was having a conversation with the treasurer, uh, he said, my aunt, about a five thousand dollar check that was being asked to rush to pay for. Uh, I didn't know anything about this check, she talked to Councilman Wenzel, Councilman Wenzel texted me on it, called the treasurer, and she basically says, without anything, they asked me to just to pay a check without any information and you can sign it and send it out. Treasurer said, I'm not gonna do that. You wanna elaborate on that?
Yeah, if I, and if I, yeah, thank you. So the check was presented to me, I was told it had to go out immediately, it was a rush check, um, so I do what I normally do, I verify everything and there was not any backup attached or in accounts payable module, so there's nothing like invoices or anything, it's to Comcast. And then I always check the general ledger because I'm going off of the charter, section eight point nine, um, which I shared with the council as well, what it says, and it says that it shall not be paid if it's exhausted, right? So the general ledger is exhausted, um, by a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So, that's why, and if, um, I was gonna have Mr. Cooper come up, cause I think this, uh, check and the urgency of this check, and I believe the mayor can still do it as an emergency, by the way, but it would have to come back to the council by the following meeting, according to section eight point nine. So that's what I need clarification, cause that is still locked up in the vault, and I think Mr. Cooper has some concerns with that check not going out possibly.
So, this actually relates to my, uh, budget amendment. Um, the Windstream technically is the telecommunications budget, um, which our Comcast business, this right here pertains, pays for our, our Comcast bill for all of our city buildings, that is our, our fiber internet connection with that. My telecommunications bill did go over budget because, as I explained in the study session, uh, Windstream more than trip actually quadrupled for us, um, and it has taken a long time to, um, be able to reduce that bill. And as we have paid that Windstream bill, and Windstream, just so that you know, is basically, is all of our desktop phones throughout the city, uh, has eaten up all the telecommunications budget.
Why?
Um, so, the, as I tried to explain in the study session, and I'm gonna try to say this as, as simple as possible, um, we've had about sixty or so POTS lines throughout the city. POTS lines are old copper lines, okay? Uh, analog, you can say. They went, they're from the bill, they went from twenty dollars a month to four hundred dollars a month per line, okay? I've had to spend, since this started happening, try to isolate and find out where all those phone lines were, because there's no doc, there was no, when I took this job, there was no documentation where a lot of these phone lines were for. A lot of lines, um, through discovery, um, have been deemed that they're, they're, they're just there. Even back in two thousand and seventeen, when, uh, Mitel was originally installed with the city, a lot of the numbers were just there because they said, hey, they're there before, let's keep them, but it was at a much reduced rate, okay? So we got hit with that and I've spent, you can ask anybody, I've spent countless hours, days, months identifying these lines to be able to reduce them. Literally on, uh, March tenth, I, we were able to port, and by the way, you've already approved the motion to make this, to get this ball rolling, to get rid of these lines, that was my UMA and the Mitel upgrades. Uh, that's not the telecommunications budget, by the way, that was a different budget line item, um, to remove those lines. So, I ported on March tenth about forty or so of those lines from, uh, being, uh, POTS lines to digital lines, which we pay about a penny a line once they're digital, you know, with that. Um, but the unexpected, we, we could not have predicted, and this is actually what I was gonna say during, potentially during my budget amendment there, we could not have predicted that this line, that these were gonna, uh, were gonna happen. And I feel horrible and that's why I've spent, again, countless hours, days, months trying to identify these lines. A lot of these lines actually do deal with, um, at the Justice Center and the nine-one-one lines. Um, literally on, uh, April fifteenth and sixteenth, just so that you know, we'll be making announcements later, um, we're actually gonna have to be bringing down, um, some phone lines at the Justice Center, and that is actually going to include our not emergency line, because that's a POTS line, and I've gotta get that off it. Only way to get that off of it is to have downtime to do the configurations for it, uh, with it. And then, that Friday, because that's a Wednesday, that's a Tuesday, Wednesday, that Friday, the whole city will go down to do the final conversion so we can get off of Windstream, uh, with it. We're gonna go from, um, about six thousand dollars a month Windstream was, to the twenty-eight thousand dollars a month that Windstream currently is, which put me over budget. Now with all the work that's been done and moving to UMA, we're gonna go down to about fourteen hundred dollars a month.
Wow.
There is gonna be state, but unfortunately, it's taken such a long time to identify these lines, to get rid of them. So this bill right here, which is all part of that telecommunications line item there, that, that Comcast, again, that's our fiber internet for all of our buildings, Windstream, that's all of our phone lines. What also comes out of this budget line is all the, the, the cell phones, anything telecommunications comes out of that and everything, and unfortunately, as a result of, of Windstream, and I know the budget amendment specifically said Windstream because that was the biggest culprit of me going over budget on line item.
I would just want you to keep in mind, or just to tell you how this operates, if I can, Councilman Wenzel. You, you, you just can't give her five thousand dollars and say pay this.
I did not do that, sir. I, I, that, that, so, yep, so, Council fellow, so because this is a recurring, kinda like a DTE bill and everything, um, he gets the notification, when I get the notification, the bill to, to have it paid, and try to get it paid in a timely math, you know, with that.
Thank you.
So, but that's, that's where that, that came from and why it is important, because this is, this is our communications, you know, for the, our internet, for every single building in the city right now.
Thank you. Councilman Wenzel, anymore?
Yeah, I mean, still, I mean, but, do we direct the treasurer in this situation, or?
So, that's what I was gonna ask, because the general ledger is exhausted and the charter, section eight point nine clearly says it should not, should, um, let me read it exactly. "No warrant shall be drawn upon the treasury after the fund from which it should be paid has been exhausted and it shall be voided." My question is, because of what you just shared, what you just heard from Director Cooper, I'm asking the council to possibly consider, cause the, the general ledger is exhausted, but it does need to get paid. So I'm seeking that from you all, by motion.
Wenzel, you all set?
Well, uh, you, no, I got, I, I do have, um, there's, uh, there's several events taking place at the high schools, our local high schools, and next month, you can check with, on their websites, and, um, there's one thing that was brought to my attention by a resident today, and I was, I was a little bit sad that I, I wasn't informed about it or on the face of the council members, but tomorrow, they're having a, uh, a, uh, veterans fair.
One to five, yep.
Yep, no, it's from, uh, let's see, it's from, uh, two o'clock to five o'clock, and it's to help veterans with, um, you know, hospital questions, uh, I think everything from clothing, uh, anything that a veteran might need help with, and I, and I believe, see, I don't even know, I mean, I'm, I'm part of the Veterans, you know, Paris Commission here in Dearborn Heights, but I, I wasn't even aware of it, so I'm just reading this off, off of here, some, uh, free legal advice, and I think it's at City Hall, right?
Yeah, well, I know this, this chamber is booked.
Oh, this chambers, okay. It's, 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 and it's free and open to all veterans. So, I, I encourage all veterans, if you have any issues or questions or concerns, attend this tomorrow, two o'clock to five, five PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, any other council members, I'll wrap it up quick, Eid Mubarak to everybody, uh, for the last almost twenty-six days, we've been fasting, where, where we don't eat from sunup to sundown, uh, no drinking, no eating, and then we celebrate it with Eid. Eid is supposed to take place this Sunday, so a lot of your Muslims will be celebrating on Sunday, Monday with a lot of food, um, and, and just, it's, it's an appreciation, everybody fits into their clothes because we're so skinny after the thirty days of not eating, it's, it's actually the best. And then by like, by a few, a couple of days later, you're filled back up and you're like, you know? Uh, but, you know, I hope that everybody gets to enjoy that. I also wanna echo Councilman Ahmad and, and, um, talking about, you know, this Women's Month and Mother's Month, um, because I think the Women's Month isn't just talking about working women, it's talking about all types of women. It could be the women that are watching their children, it could be the women that are adopting their children, it could be the women that are, are working to help out their children. Um, and so, this is a month for all women. And so, um, and, and I just wanna say, like, we have great women in our community, Councilman Ahmad is doing a phenomenal job running the, uh, Instagram, Facebook, City Council page, and he's finding these posts and he's writing up all these things about the great women in our community, and he's been shedding light on that, and I wanna thank him for really taking the time for that. And lastly, I just wanna give a little bit of respect to the council members, again, today was a very tough meeting, tough decisions were had to be made, and you guys all signed up to be the leaders, you guys all did a phenomenal job today, and I, I wanna congratulate you guys on being true leaders today, but thank you guys for that. Um, and lastly, police and fire, we love you guys, this was not a decision on saying we don't support you, our, our DPW and our Person Rex and our, and our ordinance department, we love you guys just as much, this is not us saying, and IT, I'm sorry. And IT, this is nothing against anybody in particular, not even against the administration, we just, we wanna be physically responsive. Um, weather's about to start breaking, people are gonna be speeding, light is gonna be growing, your grass is gonna grow a lot faster, trim your, you know, tr, you know, cut your grass, trim your bushes, pick your weeds, slow down, keep your windows down, but you don't gotta go sixty down the neighborhood. Uh, but our police officers, men and women of the Dearborn Heights Police Department will be out there, and our ordinance department officers, hopefully we can get two more, will be out there as well, thank you so much. Next up, we have announcements to the administration. Here it comes.
I'm gonna beat him to it. Go for it, it's impulsion, it's women's, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. On behalf of myself, Lynn Sania City Clerk and our Deputy Clerk Flamant, I'd like to thank this honorable body for approving our training budget, and I wanna give you a brief update. Okay, last week, um, Dana and I, um, attended our second year of a three-year program that's sponsored by the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks.
Where's that at?
I'm sorry?
Where, where does it take place then?
It was in Mount Pleasant.
Oh, I have chips.
Yeah, we were right behind the football stadium. Anyway, it started last Sunday at three o'clock, and some of the items were customer service and expectation. The leader of the group is named Steve Ludwig, and he was a, he's a retired DPW director south of Chicago. He was awesome, he's really gets you going, and I'd love to have him come in here. Anyway, some of the topics were, uh, success through resiliency, effective meeting techniques and parliamentary procedure, that was presented by a clerk from Grand Ledge that has been in the business for twenty to twenty-five years, he knows his stuff, he does it every day. So, um, he was great. Uh, what's your style, which was by the presenter, preparing for elections, the Bureau of Elections were there. Um, this was an interesting one too, fraud and corruption, um, somebody from the FBI was there. And then, uh, real le, leadership in public service. And then, HR do's and don'ts, because some clerks in townships and villages do, uh, have responsibility for HR. Freedom of Information Act, a retired, um, director of the Michigan State Police was there and our police department left. Anyway, the, where is he? The increase, I wanted to, I'm gonna thank the, all the fire coordinators throughout the, throughout the government, um, for all of the increase in the freedom of information, um, requests that they have, okay? But I think last week, I learned this too, was called Sunshine Week, which, um, is the national, there was a National Freedom of Information Day, it promotes public records and open government. And, um, it started like twenty years ago, um, the reformation of it in the, you know, the increase in it because of nine eleven. So there's, Google it, it's, it's interesting, I won't, um, you know, but it's, it was very interesting. Other items that they had were, um, strategic planning processing, processes for clerk and creating an action plan. So we ended that last Friday, um, and then I came home with the cold. But anyway, one of the other things that I really wanted to, um, that both, um, Deputy Clerk Flamant and I feel very strongly about this, is to start your days, aunt, with your gratitude, what are you grateful for? Okay, so me, I'm gonna share, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm, uh, grateful for my daughters and my grandchildren, I'm grateful for you, your honorable body, you have some tough decisions to make, okay? And, um, of course, I'm grateful for I, our, my clerk and my election staff, and all, as well as all of the hardworking workers here in the city.
Yeah, right.
I said, your honorable body, I'm very, well, that was my second thing, okay? The tough decisions that you have to, and then, and last but not certainly not least, um, is our community. We're all very grateful for, for all of you. So start your days with those gratitudes, okay?
Grateful for you, my honor.
So, I just wanna give a, uh, a quick update, so I've been putting some work into, uh, trying to update our city website with some more, uh, information, um, updated information. One of the most recent ones that's been updated is the DPW section with it. Um, one of the things that, for example, that Nancy brought up, we, we created the, um, the document, if I'd read it, um, we're, we're trying, we're, we're hearing what is being said, and we're trying to be able to provide some, um, some accurate information, uh, on the website. So if you go to the DPW portion of the website, it's been kind of reorganized to try to get the information a little bit faster to people with the three-click rule of, after three clicks, you lose somebody on a, on a website. Um, I also ask, if you see information on there or potential, you know, um, updated changes that can be made on the website, please let me know, um, as a team of one for the city, I can't always put all my time into the, into the website. One of the things that we are doing too, uh, to kinda go along with that water bill is, um, working with WHT, um, is to create a video of how to read, um, the, uh, the water bill. Besides going along with that, we've, we've actually created the video, uh, in English, Spanish and Arabic, so that it can be read, we'll hopefully within the next week, we'll have that, um, all done and chopped up and, and ready to be able to share out there, just to be able to help the residents understand what's going on. Again, it's not meant to alleviate the bills, but just how to read the, read the water bills and be able to go forward. So again, um, over the next few months, you know, one of the things I am doing is, is putting a lot of effort into the website to just get the information in, in different ways and, and just update the look and feel of it.
Thank you, Director. Any other announcement?
Council Chair?
Yep.
Do I do it from here?
Yep.
Okay, we have a very special, uh, meeting this Thursday at seven o'clock at three-three three-five, South Beach Daily, the South Dearborn Heights Civic Association. Our gracious clerk has agreed to come and fill us up on all kinds of information about elections, the use of signage, how long signs can be out ahead of and after and, uh, et cetera. So, please join us at seven o'clock. Lynn gave up something else to do this for us, so I really appreciate that. And I did, like, one comment, I had a, a person call in the south, and they have a serious rat problem. One gentleman opened up the hood on his car and it was full of rats. Rats eat your wires, your car doesn't work anymore, and it costs a lot to fix it, I had it happen in twenty seventeen.
Should we add, address with our director?
I'll have to dig it up for you. Yeah, okay.
Was the car sitting for a while?
I'm not sure, she didn't give me a whole bunch of details, but they were really upset because they're, they're seeing them heavily in their neighborhood.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm done.
Are you all set?
Yeah.
Good job. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Brier, for those announcements.
Sorry, I just wanted to follow up on what Council, um, sorry, Director Cooper mentioned, which is that there's a lot of updates with the website, and, uh, if you go to the City of Dearborn Heights Facebook page, we are encouraging all residents to, uh, register to the, uh, Dearborn Heights Now. So in any area of our website, if you're interested in a specific topic, you can click notify me, so anytime that there's an update in that page, the residents will get an email or even a text saying new information has been added here. The reason I'm bringing this up right now is because we're ready to release the first, um, e-newsletter, so we want as many people to register to the Dearborn Heights Now, uh, that way they can get those, those letters and that information updated, so there will be updates on anything that's happening in the city, and we're gonna try to release those more often.
Great idea.
Yeah, so, so we're excited that we finally had the time to get one of the issues ready for release.
Uh, any other announcement? We'll move it over to, uh, open up the public eye. No Zoom here today, so you get to go first.
Maybe, don't say that yet. I might walk in the door. You might walk in the door.
How you doing, man? You got three minutes, please state your name, the city, reside in, please state your address.
Renee Murna, Annapolis, Dearborn Heights.[1785.33]
So um one of the things about the roads being, you know, the potholes being fixed, you know, I haven't run into too many Dearborn Heights, but then again, I only travel like telegraph mostly. But I do want to say, I live on Annapolis and um don't fix Annapolis because Ford uses it as a test track for their new trucks, I was told by the test driver. She said, oh, I go down your street all the time, we test them, that's why they're always like covered in, you know, plastic. And they they use it as a test track, so there you have it. Maybe you can get some money from Ford for using it as a test track. Uh one thing, uh you know, just recently being, you know, sort of kind of spring weather, you know, you start cleaning out your house and stuff. But there's this lady called Marie Kondo, I don't know if anybody's familiar with her. Uh she's the Oriental Lady, they had her her own program where she was so famous because she got people to declutter, and it stayed decluttered. And I used her method and everything stayed decluttered. And and so it's really a phenomenal method, and she says you can't just go like to your closet and say, what don't I want or what don't I need? You have to basically gut everything and pick it up and say, does this bring me joy? It does it, do I feel good when I wear it, or do I feel good when I use it? Do I have a purpose for it? Does it, do I have a place for it? And if not, it goes out the door. And I'm telling you, use that method, then everything has a place. Well, I suggested, you know, and then there's this also this thing called zero-based budget, where you start the budget by knocking everything out and you say, what actually has to come back in? What has to come back in? Anything else stays out, and then you can pick and choose by what's next. So I was thinking about how that Marie Kondo can go to the zero-based budget, where you can just start from scratch, you know, in in paper and say, you know, what has to be here? And then the rest of the stuff, pick and choose, and I was told by um uh I know it's two names, Hicks, Nisa, Hicks Clayton, okay, that that, yeah, it's called priority, priority-based budgeting. So you guys already had the idea, it's just a fact, we gotta use it, go back to zero budget. What apps, and then I was also told by that young lady there, I don't remember her name, that she says that they kind of do that, oh, thirty seconds, I gotta talk fast. And but she but she said that there's some obligations that have to be done. So I say be careful on the obligations that you add to the budget, you know? And final thing, Dave Ramsey, that always works, go back, you know, if anybody knows about Dave Ramsey and the budgeting on YouTube. Start with beans and rice, rice and beans, get down to, you know, whatever you have to cut, cut, whatever the people have to cut, cut. If a tree, if a tree doesn't have to get cut, you know, get back to rice and beans, beans and rice until that budget gets balanced. That's it.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Now some in the audience.
Renee, what was her name, Kondo, what was her name?
Marie.
Marie Kondo. Hope my wife's now listening.
How you doing, man?
Good, how are you?
Time to see, you got three minutes, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Margaret King, Dearborn Heights, May First Street. Um with the budget and all the money and not having any, it really worries me because you set that money aside from Joey. Breaks my heart. Do we have any updates? Do we have anything? It's gonna be spring. Kids are out. I know kids were flying up and down my street yesterday on scooters. Um.
I'm sorry.
So, I mean, it worries me, it scares me. Um, last time I found out what was going on was by Facebook. I would appreciate it if, you know, the transparency, the communication, what's going on, what needs to be said and done? What's our next steps? I mean, here we are again. That's what I have to say, um we need money, please issue tickets, DPW tickets. I don't know, I'm throwing out ideas to help, but I'm worried Mo, I'm really worried about that money that was set aside for Joey. We don't need that accident happening again. And Saturday schools, Roger, the Saturday schools with what was going on. If people fly down, they got so many tickets, so many points, whatever, put them in Saturday schools so they can learn their lesson, and this crap won't happen again. But that's it. Thank you, guys. And happy Eid.
Thank you so much. Next up, anyone else in the audience?
Counselor Chair.
Seeing none.
I had Joey's in my notes here to look into, because I seen Margaret there, and I and I drive by his memorial every every single day, and I think about it. And I was gonna look into it, let her give her an answer on that, see if there's anything.
We set aside a million dollars for the Joyce initiative that I brought forward.
Yeah, I know, I mean, is it, is it there, and what are we doing with it? Is it collecting interest? And I hope.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Sue Kay. Think I know which food that is, but please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on, you got three minutes.
Good evening, Council, Sue Kaminsky, Ambrose Street, Dearborn Heights. Um, a few things. Uh my water meter was replaced yesterday. They were fast, efficient. They took the old meter back with them, so good job, thank you. Um regarding the budget, Mo, I think you're too kind and too understanding. And I think you're gonna have to ask the directors and administration to talk um very precisely, and you're going to have to assume they're your children. And you're gonna have to ask, what is the balance now? How much of that money has been allocated by previous motions and it is counted for? What is the current balance minus what's been counted for, and where are we at? And there's too much creative conversation by some of administrators. And they work very hard to make it hard for council to understand what's going on, and that way they can blame you. And I'm sorry it comes to this. Uh regarding police and fire, obviously, those things need to take precedent. And our family budgets, if we budget for pizza on Friday night and we can't pay the electric bill, we no longer get pizza. And as much as I want to see our parks done, we've been waiting for Van Hooten Park for years. We may have to hold back on doing any more updates there. And the last resort, which council may have to do, is you may have to call the state in. Because we cannot let residents not have adequate protection. We can't let Chief Brogan not be able to send an EMS to somebody's house or a fire truck. And unfortunately, guys, that's where we're at, and there's no if ands buts about it. Um I think when Mariana told you uh what she expects to be at the end of the fiscal year, that has included money that has been allocated for um, like you said, the emergency manager. I think, and I'm not sure because of the creative conversation, that the deficit is taking into account monies that have been allocated and not used. And I do agree that you guys need a very long um meeting on this, separate so that and every single department head needs to be there. And council can request the mayor to come to a meeting, he must get his tush there. End of subject. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. You know, I I want to say, one thing that I truly respect from Sue is she hears these meetings, she really, she understands, and she recognizes uh certain things that this council goes through, what the police department goes through. You know, a lot of times people are pointing the finger, kind of like Councilman Wansel said today. We're on TV, so we seem like we're the bad one. Truth is, we're making the tough decisions. We always seem like we're the bad ones. But when, you know, it gives me hope when we have our friends like Sue that come in here and say, Mo, we know what's happening. We know what's, you know, the the games that are being played, and it's not on the council, and I appreciate those type of comments. And I also appreciate the tough ones too and the hard ones. Uh but I I do appreciate when we when when we see that other people know what we're going to as well. Next up, we have Mrs. LaPointe.
Hello, Council. Uh Rachel LaPointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. Um I've got a whole bunch of stuff, so hopefully I can fit it in. Um first of all, thank you to Lynn for bringing up Sunshine Week. Um I've brought that up the last few years, talking about how important it is for records to be public. Um which I can bring that right to the next thing, which is that as Sue was kind of talking about for budget season coming up, you guys need to have copies of every single contract and obligation that we have currently. You need to know everything that you are obligated to, and that includes employment contracts. If somebody has employment contracts, like directors that might have specific bonuses or things that you aren't currently aware of, you guys need to know what that is, if there's employees that are work-from-home employees that you guys might not see on a regular basis. You need to know about everything. Um and to make it easier on the rest of us, make it public on the controllers part of the website as part of the budget documents, so we don't all have to fly at it. That would be amazing. Um on that topic with the budget, um double-check if forfeiture funds. I'm pretty sure we can use those for overtime for police funds, only police. But double-check that, there might be some legal room there the last time I looked into it. I don't know if there's been any changes on that. Um it might have been something that changed recently, something like that. Um also, you guys need to do a water rate study. You need to request that the purchasing director go out for bids for a water rate study. It used to happen every single year, ask anybody, ask Ray Muscat. Every single year, we had a water rate study with the water budget, it went over every single part of it, what bets were included, what made up your water rate? And then you guys could decide and look at it, maybe we can lower the water rate. It's entirely possible, because right now we do have a little bit of surplus in there because not as many water main projects have been getting done over the last four years as had been done in the past. Look back through the old minutes, look back through the old meetings, talk to older residents that have been around for a while. They can tell you how it used to be run. Blackwell wasn't perfect, but he was able to maintain stuff and keep it going on a regular cycle. And we kind of have to look back at that and go, what have we been forgetting about? What have we been missing? What motions can council put forward to direct the administration to do certain things? That'll solve a lot of the problems that are going on right now. So thank you, guys. Have a great night. And then uh I love Marie Kondo, but once she had kids, it her whole thing kind of fell apart, and I think it's kind of where you guys have the responsibilities now that you can't say no to. You can't not buy diapers for your kids. You guys are gonna have to pay what the contracts say, right? So uh I love the Marie Kondo example because that really keep reading her recent stuff since she's had kids. It's been great. Okay, have a good night, guys.
Do you feel better?
Thank you.
Awesome. Next up is Shannon, I used, I I think Shannon was supposed to keep doing announcements, I'm sorry, you can run an unmute her, she still needs to speak her now.
Thanks, Mo. Um I just had a couple of things I wanted to um talk about. The uh the water fund loan is not really a feasible option. Um like the treasurer and clerk had mentioned, it it is just a loan. Um you do have to pay interest on it, it's really just more of like a cash flow emergency situation. Um because at the end of the day, you still have to pay it back, so and you still have to find the money. So um I don't necessarily think that that's um an option um for to to pay for the budget amendments. Um I also just wanted to mention too that um any any extra funds at the end of the year that are not spent get automatically refunded to fund balance. So for the example that someone had mentioned earlier about the um the ordinate salaries line item, if there's eighty or a hundred thousand dollars in that line item that hasn't been spent at the end of the year, that automatically gets refunded to fund balance. Um and then the last thing I just wanted to mention uh was related to the Comcast bill that was submitted to the treasurer today. Um the the treasurer states that the it it's related to the fund being exhausted, not the specific GL line item. Um and the entire general fund has not been exhausted, so that technically could have been paid. Um but also, the the that GL line item has, there have been a dozen payments made out of that GL line item since it's been over budget. Um again, this this is, they they've been approved on my end because they are related to the like city functioning properly with internet and phones. Um so that that's why they've been approved on my end, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Shannon.
Yep.
I appreciate you. Any other discussion, anyone else on Zoom, anyone on person? Seeing none, and also, I just want to be very clear. Motion to adjourn by Council Brier, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Any other ones?